Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of November 14, 2017 at 6:30. I'll call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Our first thing to do is, members, have a moment of silence, please. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, whose states, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and freedom of speech, for all time.
Next is approval of minutes. We have quite a few to approve. The minutes: regular city council meeting on August 22, 2017 at 5:30; August 22, 2017 at 6:30 p.m.; October 10, 2017 at special city council meeting on September 6; October 23 and November 6, 2017. Moved approved. All right. Mr. Attorney, I read them so he doesn't have to reread them, right? Or would you prefer that?
Correct. I assume the motion to approve all the minutes. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing any, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. We have no special presentations. I will ask, though, as I assume most of these people are here for item 9D, rather than keep you till close to the end of the meeting, we do this occasionally, I'll ask council to, after we get through petitions and requests, that we introduce this item. Motion to that?
Make the motion.
I have a second.
Second.
The motion is second to move it to right after petitions and requests. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Okay. The next thing is the boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager.
I'm sorry, sir. I was moving to 9D, so we're going back to 6A?
6A, yes.
Okay, sir. Okay, the Board of Trustees of General Employee Pension Plan, newly appointed member, Mr. Kerry Kennedy, has resigned due to conflict with his employer. Ms. Ashley Byrne has submitted her application for consideration. There are no other applications on file.
It's your pleasure.
I would move to accept the resignation of Kerry Kennedy and move to appoint Ashley Byrne.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Stokoe, I think you were first on that one. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Next item is the North Bivard Library District Board Semiannual Report. We have a motion to accept the semiannual report as written.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Go for it. Member Stokoe. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Petitions and requests from the public. This is for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do I have anybody that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Just come right up. Come right up. Give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nadine Difretas. I live at 4209 Grovet Lane in Titusville, and I'm here concerned with my water bill. I have made folders for each member of the council. They're all organized in the same order. My concern, if you look on the first bill, is that I received a bill, first page, I received the bill for 17,000 gallons of water. My usual is four to five, resulting in a bill of $252. I have absolutely no understanding of why this water bill would spike like that. I don't have a leak. I don't have a pool. Nobody stole my water. And if you go to the second page here, there is a graph showing the spike in the water. The first page is the water, and the second page is sewer, which is kind of a mirror image. I received today my actual daily use printout from the city. I went ahead and got that. And I would like to say that the staff in the building, in the office, has been phenomenal. Debbie, Diana, what a great improvement from over last year. They were so helpful. So if you look on this sheet of paper, you will see that this spike within the gallons had created exactly where the hurricane occurred. And there's no explanation for that. I was at home. We had no power. We had a tub filled with water, so there was one shower. There's only two of us. So it's not to say that I left and somebody stole the water, or a hose was left on, or anything. I was there. My job was closed in Merritt Island for those four days. So there is no, I don't know what to do. If you look on the third page, shows, I had to go to the city to get this because the actual, what usage we use, like our meter readings, are not on our monthly bills. The only reason, way that I got this printout is I called the city, and they had to pull it off of one of their back sheets. So I don't know why we don't get our actual usage number on our bill. That would be nice, to be able to do this. Did everybody get a copy of this? Because I have an extra one here. Yeah? So what I'm asking the city is, and then in the, I found just one article on Neptune where Hawaii had a huge problem with them, where their meters, the Neptune meters were breaking down. I didn't have the time to do a lot more research. I also have been discussing online, trying to find other people to come and support this cause and, you know, speak up about the problems they're having. So I printed out, there are about four pages of people discussing water bill issues that they've had. I have another friend who, Council Diesel, he knows very well. He was one of his coaches. His name is Eric Ball. His bill was 19,000 gallons. Okay? So all I'm asking you, as our councilman, was to please, there's something not right, to please look into this issue. I understand that there are times when you do adjustments, and I spoke to some of the girls. Am I out of time?
Your time is up, ma'am. Do you need a few minutes more?
Yes, just two minutes more.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is second. All those in favor say yes. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I understand that at times when people come up and have a bill, and they say, "Look, I left a hose on," or "I had to fill my pool," and "I forgot to tell you," that adjustments are made. I also understand that there used to be an adjustment possibility called an unknown, which is like an anomaly, where you would consider doing an adjustment. And I would just please ask that we instigate something like that within our water department when something like this happens. Because it seems to me like majority of people just get told, "That's it. We can't do anything." You don't have any, you know, there's no reason from my side, and no explanation why these things happen. So please, as council members, I'd appreciate if you'd look into it. And if there's anything else I can offer on behalf of you, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, are you familiar with this at all? Would you please look into that?
No, sir.
You know, things happen, and we don't know what's happening in that particular water thing, so it would be kind of not proper, not proper for us to make a decision on it tonight, but he will look into it, and we'll see what he can do. Sure. Any other petition, any other petition, please come up. Lady in the front here, and then if you, anybody else wishing to speak, please come up to the front. Name and address, please.
Dr. Regina Faulkner, 3868 Southbridge Circle, Titusville. That's Hunter Riz subdivision. Many of you know me. You've met me. Tallahassee knows me. Renee Placencia knows me, and most of my other politicians know me. We moved into the neighborhood in October 2014. We were told a sound barrier wall was coming. None was forthcoming. We bought the house in good faith. My one neighbor-
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said is coming.
The I-95 sound barrier wall we were supposed to get on our section.
That's not something we do, ma'am.
I understand this, but every time that I go to one politician, I'm circled back around to another one, and I keep being told, "Talk, you know, try to get your city behind you."
Let me, so you understand that we have no sway over that situation. I mean, we don't do that. The state does that, I believe.
But the state, I've already gone to Renee Placencia. He presented it. We've had, I've been able to get an independent engineer to come in and do studies, and he said that the quality of life and the sound levels are deemed inaudible speech for the backyards, and it is harmful to health, and there has been some hearing loss and other problems. People are letting their homes go to foreclosure. They're moving. The quality of the neighbors are declining, but yet the property taxes look like they're going up. So I have had politicians and DOT standing on my back porch, and they have asked to go in the House to talk because they cannot hear, standing shoulder to shoulder. It's not pleasant. And when Renee Placencia asked DOT, "How many neighborhoods in Titusville that run along I-95 do not have a sound barrier wall?" He said, "We were the only one." And Renee Placencia's comment was, "Well, I find it kind of odd, you know, there's enough neighbors here, and it's a higher-income area. We're paying higher property taxes, and we cannot use our backyards." So I'm kind of to the point where I'm ready to prorate my taxes for the portion of my property that I can use. I know I can't do that, but I'm telling you.
Did your representative, Mr. Placencia, say what he could do? Because he is in the state.
Well, he took it, he took it to Tallahassee. Tallahassee turfed it back to DOT. DOT says, "Oh, we've already been around this." DOT initially never even came out. They did a study from Volusia County on a, what was it called?
Computer model.
On a computer model. They never even came out. So then they hired Jim Matatka, an independent engineer who came out, and two environmental engineers also came out, and said that the living conditional, conditions in our neighborhood are abhorrent. So please, if somebody can point me in the right direction, I don't mind fighting the fight, but point me in the right direction, because I've just been sent in a circuitous path.
Ma'am, I don't want to sound like I'm pushing you off, but the state is the right direction, and your state representative would be the first one to talk to, and you already have done that. What would you like us to do, ma'am?
I would like, okay, we were told what the criteria were, and I can, we can prove, and these are my neighbors also, they live in the neighborhood, we can prove that there are several areas around us, specifically, like, for instance, one of the DOT people came to the house, and she said, "We've never put up, like, around a golf course, for instance. Sherwood Oaks has, Sherwood Golf Course has a wall, and there's no development there." So there are areas where they've made exceptions, like blatant exceptions. They're saying we fall five houses short of qualifying for a sound barrier wall. We cannot use our backyards at all.
Your time is up. Would you like additional time?
Yeah, because I'm finally, you know, I'm getting heard.
Two minutes. Two minutes.
Sure. I just-
Do I have a motion for that, please?
Thank you.
I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
You know, every door I've knocked on, you know, if I could find somebody, I've gone, and I've gone wherever they've told me to go. I've offered to go to Tallahassee. When I talked to them in Tallahassee, they tell me it's a DOT thing. When I talked to DOT, they said, "We've already made our decision." They say we don't meet the criteria, but when we point out all these other areas that are blatantly not eligible for it, and they're telling us we only fall five residences short of being eligible for a sound barrier wall, it's a little, it's a slap in the face.
Ma'am, believe me, I sympathize with what you're saying. I'm not sure what we can do, though.
Come to my house for a barbecue.
Thank you. I don't make house calls. Thank you.
Renee Placencia did when he was running for office.
That's great.
And I didn't see him out. He sought me out, because he came to visit a neighbor, and they were on the inner circle, and he said he could not stand the noise.
And he can't help you at all?
He's not been able to. And he didn't put much, fortunately, in my opinion, he's turned into a politician very quickly. So he got into office, and once he got into office, he kind of forgot his constituents.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, can you look into this and see if we-
We actually have, sir. We've done this about two and a half years ago, and what you're saying is absolutely correct. It is a state issue. And the city, we brought up quality of life issues for that neighborhood, because it is within our city limits. And just as you stated, the state said that they don't meet the criteria for said wall.
But, again, like we've said, we could point out blatant areas where they far, 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 like Holder Road, Sherwood Golf Course, Carpenter Road, they do not meet the criteria, and they're telling us we're falling five residences short. So homes are going up for sale in our neighborhood, left and right. People are buying them at a fraction of what they're worth. It's driving our property value down.
Your time is up.
Just please consider, if you can direct me somewhere, I'd be happy.
I've directed you somewhere. You don't want to go there.
How do I go there when they won't let me come?
I can't make the state make you, let you do anything, or be more, do anything different. We have no ability, no ability to do that. Can we, can we write a letter of some sort, Mr. City Manager, in support of this lady?
I'd be more than willing to travel to Tallahassee and speak, and the independent engineer who did the study said that if asked, he would come, and he would testify that the quality of life in our neighborhood is poor, and that the decibel levels of the noise, and it's gotten worse, are intolerable.
What I would suggest, sir, and council, is perhaps you could send me the information that you have, the data that you have, and we could put a cover letter from the city council to the state with, endorsing what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
And see if that may get some traction that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor, if I could-
Wait, I'm sorry. We got Vice Mayor.
If I could clarify, is it direction of council for the city manager to send a letter, or are you going to authorize the mayor to sign a letter? So-
I'd be glad to sign it.
Okay. Yeah, so if you could please have a motion and approve the mayor to sign a letter of support.
Then I'd make that motion, that we draft a letter of support and have the mayor sign it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
And we will need the supporting documents.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously.
Sir.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, so one is a body, one is, as a council body, there's action that we can take, which is just done. Additionally, I'm of the belief also you start at your home government, and even if it's outside the scope of your home government, that as representatives, sometimes we can carry a message of our citizens to other government agencies.
Yes, sir.
And so I think that's what I hear you as asking for.
Just help and guidance.
Yeah, and because of that, please keep in mind that we can't speak outside as a body of, from a, from a city council, but if what you're asking for is to remind our state legislatures of, you know, we got a, we got a part of town that it sure would be nice to have a wall, and they're your representatives as well.
Yes, sir.
I think that that's reasonable, but that would be, that would be as individuals and not speaking as behalf of, as a council, so.
I believe that's what we just did, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Don't disagree.
Well, thank you for restating it, then.
Make, sure.
Okay. Anyone else, ma'am, please?
Hi, my name is Julian Madra, and I live at 203 North Dixie Avenue. I'm here also about a water bill issue. My water averages from 4,000 to 5,000 gallons a month. In July, I got a bill for 34,000 gallons, which was $573. The only thing that changed was the city replaced my meter with a digital meter. I've gotten no help from the city at all, you know, from the water department at all. There's no explanation. If I wanted an investigation, I have to pay an additional $450. So if you guys could look into that, please.
Did your water bill with the new meter come out to where you think it should be?
Yes, after the, month after they installed it, I got that for, 34,000 gallon bill, and then it's been $4,000 to $5,000 since.
Okay. Again, I would ask you to speak to the city manager, and we look at that situation, unless you know it.
Have you contacted customer service at all?
Oh, yeah. I've been up there.
And what is the result?
I have to pay him $450 for an investigation.
Do you know anything to him about it? I don't. Yeah.
Probably the assistant city manager, deputy city manager will, will look at it and look into that. Is that good? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the petitions and requests? I see no one. Mr. City Manager will go to 9A.
Hi, I'm Holly Devon. I live at 2632 White Oak Lane. I too had a water bill that is irregular. I experienced a spike like what happened with her over there about the same time. I'm 2,000 to 4,000 gallons, and it went to 9,000 gallons, which is a lot for me. It's not a whole, it's not 35,000 gallons, but there's no reason for this, because I live alone, and I was actually conserving water. I'd lost my job in August, and I've been saving as much as I can, and then I get a bill for $9,000, or 9,000 gallon consumption.
9,000.
Yeah, it does need to be looked into, please.
Well, we seem to be having water problems this month.
Yes, yes.
Again, I will refer you to city staff on that, and if you will come in and see Tom, his assistant city manager, he'll look that, look into that for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Now, item 9B.
I believe what you're asking for is 9D, sir.
Oops, sorry. You're correct. Yes, 9D.
Planning and zoning commission recommended denial of this request due to the lot size and incompatible with surrounding zoning. The applicant, Mr. Jim Swan, on behalf of the owner, First Equity Development Group Incorporated, is requesting to rezone approximately 28 acres of a 70-acre property located west of Interstate 95 and east of Carpenter Road and north of Fox Lake Road. The request is to rezone from residential estate RE zoning district to new plan development PD zoning with master plan for purposes of constructing a new residential subdivision with 70 lots. The lots will be a minimum of 70 feet wide and 115 feet deep. The city of Titusville's comprehensive future land use designation is low-density residential, which allows a maximum residential density of five units per acre for the development with the potential of 130 residential units. A PD zoning requires 35% of the 26-acre development to be dedicated to open space. The applicant is proposing to utilize 5% open space credit by including a publicly accessible park. The remaining 44 acres of the property are wetlands, which are, will be dedicated to the St. John's Water Management District with an easement. Adoption of the planned development rezoning ordinance will approve the master plan with conditions, and the conditions are described in your packet.
Mayor, as this is quasi-judicial, I'll read the quasi-judicial rules first, and then I will read the title to the ordinance.
All right.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table in the back of the council chambers. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first. Those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff, and other representatives, parties, as authorized by the council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have all persons wishing to speak before the city council sign an oath card?
Yes, sir, but I believe there's people in the back of the room filling out cards right now.
Correct. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, has this agenda item been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding an item to be reviewed?
I did, I did want to disclose, I do know Ms. Danielle Bowden, and I talked to her prior, not really about this issue, just issues regarding the rules about speaking, so I did want to disclose that. so I did want to disclose that.
Did you form any opinions regarding this item based on that discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. This is ordinance number forty-two thousand seventeen. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five nineteen ninety-three of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by replacing the present residential estate RE zoning to planned development PD zoning to a portion of a seventy-acre parcel located on the north side of Fox Lake Road, east side of Carpenter Road, and the west side of Interstate 95, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, and staff, do you have a presentation on this?
I do, sir, thank you. First of all, I want to introduce myself. I'm Peggy Biusaka, the Community Development Director, and I will be referring to the staff report, which begins on page two thirty-seven of the council agenda. I've already also provided a copy of this report to the clerk, as well as the applicant. In two thousand four, the property was annexed into the city and was designated with a low-density residential future land use. In two thousand five, a plat was approved to construct a cluster subdivision, which allows ten thousand square foot lots and had a total of, I'm sorry, with a open space of fifty percent. The current zoning proposal is to allow eight thousand square foot lots with a seventy-foot width provided in six, and thirty-five percent open space with a five percent open space credit. The differences between the last plat that was approved as part of a cluster subdivision and the current proposal is that the lot size is smaller, the lot width is smaller, the setbacks are smaller, and that additional property is being preserved. The number of units is the same. And so, for that reason, when you're looking at this development, we would ask that you remember that the proposed and the one that had been previously approved are essentially the same as far as concurrency standards and that kind of thing. In reviewing this, chapter thirty-four requires that this, an analysis be made as to consistency with the comprehensive plan. The staff has found that the proposed zoning and master plan are consistent with future land use element objective one fourteen, future land use policies one fourteen point four, one fourteen point eight, one fourteen point nine, and one sixteen point two. In addition to that, the project is required to meet concurrency related to level of standards. Any concurrency discussed tonight is preliminary, and the final review will be made at the time that the actual preliminary plat is made. The rezoning in the master plan will have direct access to, access to Carpenter Road, which is designated as a collector roadway and thus provides adequate existing public streets. The land will support the proposed development. A majority of this property is within floodplain X, based on the FEMA designation. The master plan will require approximately one acre of wetland mitigation, but the amount of wetlands that are proposed to be modified are significantly reduced from that of the previous plan. The development standards and the allowable uses within the proposed PD zoning district are similar to other development in proximity to the subject area. In, the master plan proposes a fifty-five foot wide landscape buffer between the subdivision and I ninety, I ninety-five, and thirty-foot wide buffers between the development and Fox Lake Road and Carpenter Road. The existing RE zoning districts allows the development of single-family homes, but requires a minimum lot size of one acre. The proposed development will yield the same number of lots as the previously proposed cluster subdivision while protecting additional wetland areas on the property by utilizing smaller lot sizes. The proposed seventy-foot single-family lots on twenty-six acres is consistent with the low-density residential land use designation, there is sufficient utilities, and the internal roadways will meet the city's street standards and will be dedicated to the city. I'd like to comment that under the previous development, there would have been a maintenance of about thirty-five acres of open space. The proposed plan requires thirty-five percent of the twenty-six acre development, which is nine point one acres, and in addition to that, there is a significant amount of property that's not being touched and is not being rezoned this evening, for a total of fifty-three point one acres. So, it's an increase from thirty-five to fifty-three point one acres. The staff recommends approval of the planned development rezoning ordinance and the master plan with conditions that are specified in exhibit A of the ordinance. That's found on page two forty-seven of the staff, of your document, and you will notice that it lists the permitted accessory uses, the maximum density to be seventy single-family residential lots. It talks about the preservation tracks of forty-eight acres minimum. The total of this is a little bit more than that. And it also limits the maximum impervious lot coverage, principal building setbacks, the roadway design and traffic circulation, utilities, natural resources, and buffering and screening. And if it is helpful to counsel, I do have maps that show both the original plan and the proposed plan, if that would be useful for you to compare. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hmm? Oh, is it two? No? That's two. Oh, but these two are the same, so give me that and trade it.
The, the item that is the darker area shows the previous proposal, and the one that is lighter shows the current proposal.
Questions of staff from council? We'll give them a second to take a look through here.
I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize, I got that backwards. That this is, the darker is the proposed, and the lighter is the one that was previously approved. If you see the words Morehen on there, the street, Morehen Avenue, that's the proposed.
Go right ahead.
So, basically, what we're looking at is smaller lot size, but all the lots actually have extra land behind them, it looks like.
What they've done based on the, the origin, the plan that had been previously approved is they moved them out of the wetlands so as to have fewer wetland impacts.
Okay, I see what you're saying. But each, it looks like, looking at this map, it looks like each of the houses will have either woods or wetlands in their backyard, as opposed to actually having a bigger lot and maybe having part of their lot wetlands.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll ask the speakers to come up, first being the applicant, and then everyone else who has a card will be called. Name and address for the record, sir?
Come again, I'm old, I can't hear. Who are you? I'm Jim Swan. I'm representing the applicant, EKS. I'm here with my attorney, Cole Oliver. And I, I read to you all what I thought at your last meeting, and I don't want to have to read, I don't want you all to have to listen to me read this whole thing again, but I want to say that y'all, Titusville's a special place, I know you know that, but it's a special place geographically, in that it's a series of relic sand dunes and low depressions, and there's not a lot of land that's appropriate for development from an environmental point of view. And so, your cluster ordinance that y'all, your ordinance you passed that allows for these clustering of subdivisions, I'd take my hat off to you if I had one, because it's the right way to go, I believe, for this town. So, the real question, I think, at the end of the day is, are these smaller lots appropriate in the neighborhood? And I think, just so you know, what we're saving is three point nine six additional acres that were going to be cleared and filled. And if you just do the quick math, that's about twenty-five hundred square feet per lot. So, if we did the original plan and went into those, if we stayed with the original lot size and went into those wetlands, we could easily maintain the same size as the old plan, way over ten thousand square feet per lot. But then you are destroying wetlands, and so that's a judgment call that y'all are going to make, is how important wetlands are to you. We're, we did this, you know, with a lot of thought and a lot of purpose. I don't usually do zoning for things. I usually invest with younger people that do this kind of stuff all the time. But I really like this land. I walked it with my wife on a Sunday afternoon and thought, man, this could really be beautiful, because the wetlands that surround it aren't disturbed, they're not hurt, they're not ruined, they're not covered with Brazilian peppers, they're just, they're very pristine and very pretty, and they're going to be a great asset to the subdivision. So, in, in closing, let me just say that we've heard no testimony that uses any kind of evidence that says that we're going to do anything to property values in the area as far as decreasing them. We're going to build brand-new, energy-efficient houses, the same size or bigger than the ones that were in the old plan, the same number, actually one less than was in the old plan, and they'll be modern, well-done. You have to take my word on that, but that's kind of what we do for a living, and, and our company wants to build these, on these lots. We're not talking about putting these for track houses to a merchant builder, we're talking about doing these ourselves to try to bring something to Titusville that, that all of us can be proud of. Thank you.
Anybody have a question for Mr. Swan, first of all? Go right ahead.
What, what size houses are you looking to build on these lots?
The zoning that y'all would approve is for a minimum size of two thousand square feet.
Okay.
And, in fact, they'll be twenty-two, twenty-four hundred square feet up to bigger. We have to see the market. We'll, we'll do a couple of models with the two different sizes, and whatever sells is, we'll build a lot more of that size.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Swan?
Thank you.
Does any other member of your group wish to speak at this time?
I have my designer here.
There you go.
Give me just half a second here. I have a handout for council.
Sure, sure. Excuse me, yes, my name's Loyce Ward, and I'm the planning consultant for the applicant, EKS Development. Page one of the, the handout consists of five pages. The first page is a notarized affidavit prepared by me, and I'm going to read it for the record now. I'm a professional surveyor and mapper, Florida registration number two-three-nine-six, practicing in Brevard County in the state of Florida since nineteen seventy-six. I'm also a land planner, site designer, and land development consultant. I owned and operated a civil engineering and land surveying firm under various names from nineteen seventy-six through two thousand and six. That's specialized in designing and permitting both residential and commercial projects. I am a former member of the East Florida Regional Planning Council, appointed by former Governor Bob Graham. I have, that's been a while ago. I have been previously qualified as an expert witness on comprehensive plan and zoning matters by the city of Titusville in Brevard County, and on land surveying matters by the Eighteenth Judicial Circuit Court. I designed the original site plan of South Carpenter State for First Equity Development Group, which approved by city council in two thousand and five. I also designed the current planned development master plan of South Carpenter State for EKS Development. I have reviewed the current city Titusville comprehensive plan and land development regulations, and the planning staff report for the current rezoning request by EKS, and the preliminary, preliminary concurrency review prepared by city staff dated October nineteen two thousand and seventeen. It is my professional opinion that the subject request for PD zoning is consistent with its adopted comprehensive plan and its ethical elements, meets the requirements of City LDR Chapter Thirty-three entitled Plan Development, including purpose and intent per section thirty-three-one, the planned development standards per section thirty-three-five, and complies with the review criteria per section thirty-three-eight. I concur with the findings of said staff report and concurrency review, and agree that all necessary public services are available, including potable water, wastewater, roadway access, and sufficient recreation open space. Both, both the city of Titusville and St. John's River Water Management stormwater regulations require post-development runoff volume, stormwater volume to be less than existing previous amounts, therefore, this project will not adversely affect flooding of any adjacent properties. The proposed planned development will impact about four acres of wetlands less than the original approved plan. That's one point seven acres versus five point six-six acres, and will have about two point five acres of impervious surfaces less, approximately seven acres versus nine and a half. That's all the roads, streets, and sidewalks combined. And that's the end of the affidavit. If you'll turn to page two of the, of the handout, this is an exhibit. At the top, shows the old plan under existing RE zoning, and shows where the wetland impacts were proposed at that time, and that totals, as I stated, the five point six-six acres. The plan below shows existing development area, one point seven, and that equals seventy percent less wetland impacts than the prior proposal. Page three, again, the top shows the existing RE planning and the old proposal, and the roadways alone in that proposal consist of three point three-two acres of pavement. On the bottom of that sheet is our proposal, and the roadway's been reduced to three, to two point zero-one acres. This is a note that also is less road maintenance, less stormwater runoff, and a more efficient plan. The, page four, you may or may not have in your other packet, oh, the reduction in roadways Page four is a preliminary concurrency assessment prepared by city staff. This shows that adequate potable water, wastewater, transit circulation, recreational open space facilities are available to serve the proposed zone. And also, you should note that the demand on these facilities for the PD plan will be less than the previous RE zoning plan. And page five, last page of the handout, shows the site, the property under contract by EKS is in red, that's about 70 acres. The yellow on the interior shows the proposed lot layout, and the actual development area is only about 28 acres of the 70 acres, the rest will be preserved. It also shows that there are only five homes within 500 feet of the development area. Those are all located along South Carpenter Road near Fox Lake Road, and the, there are some people interested in the quest to join the properties in North, but their properties are over 1,180 feet from the nearest lot within this development, more than adequate buffer. In conclusion, the proposed PD plan was designed to reduce wetland impacts, reduce stormwater runoff, reduce demand on public facilities, and provide buffers between development, existing roads, and homes. For the foregoing reasons, I request your approval of this PD zoning request. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ward? I see none. Anyone else from your group, sir?
Hello.
Hello.
Danielle Bowden, Green Designee with the National Association of Realtors. I'm also the chairperson for Space Coast Association Realtors Green Committee, and I'm on the Indian River, excuse me, Lagoon Oversight Committee. I'm the real estate alternative for that board. So I'm here to discuss sustainable growth for Titusville, and I know I gave a handout at the last reading, and I just want to summarize the basic points. We have the demand with our millennials moving here for our high-end jobs. What they want is smaller lot sizes, and I quoted Realtor Magazine last time. New homes are getting larger, but their lot sizes are getting smaller due to the demand, and 34% of our new home buyers today are from the millennials. And the most important things for the millennials in the market today is heating and cooling costs. They want energy-efficient homes, and they want low commuting cost. Their top priority is the home, and if we don't have the communities today for them, they will commute to the communities surrounding us that are offering what they're demanding. So with sustainability, which is their top priority when purchasing today, there's a balance between people, planet, and profit. And when we speak of people, we're looking at aesthetically pleasing communities that meet the current buyer's demands. We're looking at home costs meet the current market demands, this community offers that. And then their number-one consideration, according to Builder Magazine, is increased natural lighting. And this community offers that, and I know Ms. Nelson had mentioned the way that the new design is, the homes all have a view, the front and the back, the homes are not stacked on top of each other, and it allows for more natural lighting, which is a number-one concern for home buyers today. Then planet, we're reducing wetland impacts significantly for this community. We're increasing the green buffer around the community and throughout the community. We're decreasing impervious surfaces, so helping things such as our lagoon and St. John's, St. John's River. And then profit, higher tax base for the city by bringing this community in. We're minimizing road costs. You can see in what the handouts have before you that we have less roads to maintain, and we're minimizing utility costs through the infrastructure that's decreasing. The builder that will be going in their new Vision Homes has been building at The Great Outdoors for 17 years. They have a great reputation. They're one of the most impressive builders that I have seen for energy efficiency. Their design goes beyond green, and they go into high-performance building with their energy recovery ventilator, their monolithic design among steel-reinforced surrounding, and then their spray foam insulation. It's the tightest sealed house that I have seen on the market through our studies. And EKS has made the biggest impact that I've seen in Titusville as a Realtor. The Great Outdoors, La Cita, and Windover Farms are some of the most reputable communities as a Realtor to show property in. And I feel that Jim Swan has made a great impact on Brevard County with winning the Legacy Award for Philanthropic Achievement. He helped build Brevard Zoo, supported Natural Conservancy, the St. John's Water Management District, Florida Institute of Technology, Marine Resource Council, National Seashore Park Planning Commission, and he was the past chairman of North Brevard Development Commission. So I think that this community, I know that this community is going to bring what's demanded of Titusville's market, and I don't think there's a better person to bring the community to fruition than Jim Swan and EKS. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for this person? I see none. Anyone else from your group? That's it? Okay. Now we'll go over...
Sorry, I couldn't get up fast enough. Hi, good evening. My name's Nathan Montgomery. I am actually here as a resident and a Realtor as well, and just wanted to kind of share a couple of things. I've been attending the Titusville tomorrow, stakeholder workshops the last couple of weeks, or over the last month. And matter of fact, at the last meeting, Canaan Associates, that's been hired by the city to help with that process, in the course of that meeting, one of their employees actually said in passing that what's desired today are smaller lot lines, smaller lots, and actually are zero lot lines. That's kind of what the market is desiring at this time. And so that makes these, as Danielle said, desirable, desirable properties. One of the other things I looked at was the Census Bureau Survey of Construction states that new home buyers prefer lots that are less than 8,600 square feet, which was repeated in Realtor Magazine, The Atlantic, and plenty of other publications that picked up that, those statistics, and passed them on to the public. A couple of things I noticed as a Realtor, the current market is rather tight. We have two and a half months of inventory on the market right now, as of 3:00 this afternoon, when I pulled that up. So we're essentially, according to NAR, we're in a stalled market. Which leads me to Lawrence Yun, who's the chief economist for the National Association of Realtors or NAR, recently stated that we need a 1950s building boom, is what is necessary to break this market free and to help the economy. He stated that we've seen a decade-long run on unproduction of homes and a super-low home inventory, well below what's demanded. And so the last statement towards the end of that comments from him was, we need more construction. So my thoughts with all those facts in mind is that a project, a project like this fits the desired trends of the market, of those that are coming in as new home buyers. It, stopping it would stop much-needed new housing in the area. One of the things that was also stated by Canaan Associates in the first workshop was that Titusville is lagging behind in keeping up with the rest of the county on growth. And so that's something that's really important, and new building is a big part of that, new construction. It also, I feel like if it wasn't approved, it could prevent this developer from moving forward and developing something. It also could prevent other developers from wanting to develop if they feel like it's not a friendly environment for development. And I think it also would keep a lot of people away, possibly other businesses away, because when they look to an area, they look for a place that their employees can find housing, and they look to a place that there's a variety of housing, and that there's new houses, there's old houses, there's large lots, there's small lots, a lot of variety. And so not, not moving forward kind of takes us out of the running for, for some businesses that may be coming to the area, or would be thinking of coming to the area, and could send them off in, on a different direction where they can find those things. So just my thoughts on, on some things there that I wanted to share with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Cole Oliver, Rosway Swan, counsel for Mr. Swan, two different Swans, believe it or not. But just at this point, I think our side, the pros, I've concluded speaking for it, and I'd like to reserve the right to rebuttal on our side, but also cross-examine witnesses as they present to the council.
You have that right, sir. Anyone else? If not, did you almost get up again? No, you can't do that. We'll ask for speakers by card at this point. You will be timed for three minutes. If you need, absolutely need additional time, you can ask for that, and if council decides to do it, you will get it, as you have seen in other cases up here. So, Clark, would you please read the cards?
Yes, sir. Laura Lee Thompson.
How are y'all doing tonight? I'm Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue in Memes. And Jim's right, we really do have a special community here. We have hundreds of acres, or no, thousands, 100, tens of thousands of acres in public ownership on the west side of town, hundreds of thousands of acres on the east side of town. We have a birding festival that takes place every year, and I have spent a lot of hours riding people around that came from the birding festival that fell in love with our community, that wanted to buy a home here. And what they are looking for, they want a home where they're going to have natural area in their backyard. They don't want a home in a subdivision where they're going to have somebody else's home in their backyard. And so I got tired of riding around in my truck, so I had Ronnie Honeycutt help me make a map of the area. So we made this big, huge map of North Brevard County, and it shows all the streets that have natural areas that are going to remain natural areas. It shows all the streets that have that kind of environment, because there's nothing worse than buying a home and having, having a Realtor assure you that, oh, those woods are going to be there forever, and you wake up to the sound of a bulldozer in your backyard one morning, and all the trees are crashing, and you've got a subdivision going in behind you. I applaud the city staff for coming up with this clustering ordinance. I think it's exactly what we need. Like Jim said, we have a lot of very unique geographical features in our, in our community, and we sure don't want to be coming in at, in these depression marshes and filling them in so that we can build houses. So I, I looked at the plan, out of the 70 houses, 65 of them are going to always have a natural area when they look out their backyard, in their backyard, and the wetlands, those are beautiful wetlands. If you haven't gone and looked at them, that is a really, really pretty piece of property. And those wetlands will always be there, and the neighbors will be buffered, they won't, they won't be able to see the homes. And, you know, I've been to a lot of visioning things, I've heard what the people from this community want. They want new restaurants, they want new shops, new places to shop, and we're getting that with the tightest landing. But if we don't increase some density in this town so that people are there to shop in those shops, they're not going to make it. And that's, you know, this, this is exactly what we need. I don't think we could ask for a better developer to, to develop an outstanding development that could be a showplace for other developers on the kind of development that we want here in Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think I'm going to let that one stand.
That's a good, good idea, I think. Next, please, Clark.
Don Page.
And also, if some of you can, want to come up front, I'm not sure what order or how many there are, but if some of you will take some seats up front, so you won't have to walk so far.
I've got given comments there that you could pass out that represent what I have. Let me, let me just say right off the top, you couldn't find a better builder, I don't think, than...
Sorry, did I, did we?
Don Page, 3595, 93 Thal Road in, I'm not in the city limits, I'm outside the city limits.
Thank you, sir.
I own the property along with my neighbors on the north end of this piece of property. You couldn't find, I don't think, a better builder than Mr. Swan to do this job, and we are not against development in this area. In fact, we look forward some development here. We've looked forward here for many years. But you probably, I think, were on the council when we went to fight for how to do this cluster on this particular piece of property, back in 2004. That was before your time?
Well, before I was on council.
Okay, before your time. Gotcha. But anyway, we had many meetings, a lot of arguing, a lot of discussions, a lot of the citizens in here talking, and to come up with a scheme, and that's where we came up with this idea of keeping the RE zoning and get down to quarter-acre lots. And that's where we came up with that cluster idea. You guys had it, you were working on it, we tried to get it applied to this one, and we agreed to that back in 2004. I hate to see us going back now and saying, okay, we've decided to change our minds, we're going to lower the standards on this property and go back to something other than RE residential estate. If you go down Carpenter Road, it doesn't make any difference where you look, and every household that you can see in the vision is an RE-zoned area. And what we don't want to see happen is that you degrade this area back to something less than the RE zoning, and keep a quarter acre, quarter-acre lots as the minimum. I hear people saying, oh, we want smaller houses, smaller lots, maybe bigger houses than smaller lots. But I, I don't want to hear the house next door flushing the toilets, okay? That's what we're talking about. We're talking about a California system. I lived out there three or four times, I was born in California, and I know what happens when you start jamming them up, up go the fences, because it's the only way you can protect your little piece of ground with fences in between it. So now you've got subdivisions with houses with fences all over the place. And that's what starts happening when you start decreasing a piece of ground down to small lots. Now, I'm an engineer, I'm retired, and I would not buy a 70-foot lot, build a 2,000-square-foot house on. Especially when I've got to give up 10, 10 feet in the back of my lot for an easement. So what we would desire is to keep the RE zoning on this lot, and the city, St. John's, the citizens, and the builder work together to see if we can't keep this in the RE zoning capability. Can I have more time?
Yes, sir. Two minutes?
That'd be fine.
All right. One minute? One minute be fine?
Maybe more than two.
Let's go for two.
Let's go for two. I'll make that motion.
Have a motion for two minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Now, I could ask that those that are here opposing this could stand up, but I think that most of them, you'll notice who they are. We just don't want to reduce the PD zoning. We want to work together with whoever needs to be, to work with in order to make this RE work. This town has lots of areas of residential R1, zero-lot line land. You don't have many left RE areas to build houses that people want this quality and this size of a lot. One-acre lots are just about gone, but at least we can retain this quarter acre for RE, and that's what the argument was back in the cluster zone capability. That's our, that's our appeal. Now, the rest of my comments have to do with any submittal that's made. This thing is submitted as a master plan, and the master plan submittal has a lot of LDRs that are required when it's submitted, and those were not, that was not done in this master plan submittal. Now, I have referenced all of the areas that I can identify. I have, I'm able to read to you every one of these LDRs as to what they say. The one that we look at the most is the concurrency requirements. And concurrency requirements now get back to stormwater management. Where's no storm management, stormwater management with this plan, which is required by your LDR 6.1.7. It requires an environmental component to the plan in 6.1.5. It requires a general layout of the water, sewer, and storm system per LDR 3455A8. I could just keep right on going. But this pertains to any master plan that you get, any submittal. But this pertains to any master plan that you get, any submittal.
Can you sum up real quickly, sir?
Yeah. I'll just leave those with you, because you can go back and look at your own LDRs and see what is, what's supposed to be required with the master plan. My only point that I want to make to you is, we want to retain the RE zoning, 10,000-square-foot lots. That's our requirement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next card, please, Clark.
Margaret Kinslow.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, Margaret Kinslow, 1301 South Carpenter Road. First of all, I would like to point out to you that any application of this sort is a part of the record, and with every application of this sort, Brevard County has a six- or seven-page paper that they put in that says what their administrative policies are. And in every one of these policies, at least once, if not three or four or five times, they, they voice in this, or they say in this, that they are there to protect the current homeowners, and the current people who own property in the area that is being asked to be rezoned. When I went to your site, and I looked up your planning and zoning department, they had two paragraphs. And their purpose, the purpose of the planning department is to perform the daily operations associated with the maintenance of the comprehensive plan, providing interpretations of the current planning and zoning regulations, development and site plan consultation and coordination, site plan review, and downtown development review and coordination. That's their purpose. They say nothing about protecting the people that own the property in the city. So, I just wanted to point that out to you, and you may want to speak to your planning and zoning department, and see if they could come up with something where they are protecting the people that are already citizens of your city, and the citizens of the county around the city. The next thing I want to say to you is that anyone buying swampland in Florida should not expect to build houses on it. And when they buy swampland that has other land there, they should realize that they're zoning with that land, and they should buy it with the understanding and with the realization that if they're going to make money, they have to have enough land there to build enough houses to pay them to buy the swampland along with it. That's just a point I want to make. I am not against developing the area that Jim Swan wants to develop, and I'm not against him as a builder, because I think he builds great things, even though there are, there's one development, Wendover Farms, that floods in areas. I think he's probably grown and developed since then, and that wouldn't happen in this one, hopefully. But we are against, well, there's a paper, have you passed that out? Okay, I would like you to look at this. They're talking about building 70 houses. So, I took the area around this community, and Fox Lake Manor is not our neighborhood, folks. If the planning and zoning department included that in their, what they said about this being congruent with the residential area around it, those people never have to come into our neighborhood. They can live without ever, ever coming over the bridge. But we are impacted who live on the west side of 95. And at the, I need more time. Yes, I do. Please.
Two minutes? A second? Motion, a second? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
You have two more minutes, ma'am.
I took the 70 houses closest to this development, and I added up all of the acreage, and I added up all of the housing, square housing footage, and the sub-area for each house. And at the bottom of your page, you have those, those sizes. In the neighborhood that is already established around this area that they're proposing to develop, the lot size is 84,724 square feet. That is at least eight, it's over eight times what the 10,000 square feet is, and it would be 10 times what the 8,000 square foot would be. The living area we're talking about, and I made sure when we had this, the meeting the last time, that he was talking about 2,000 square feet of living space, because he just said 2,000 square-foot houses and, or flooring, and that would include, could include the garage. So, I made sure about that. But the housing size would not be that altered. But look at the sub-areas of what's really already in the neighborhood. In the neighborhood, we have over 4,000 square feet developed on our land. That's twice the size of the houses they're going to build. In the cluster, it's 2,400 square feet, and the proposed 8,000, it would be 2,000 square feet. Okay? So, or, well, we have to be 2,400, because that's, that's changed ever since the last meeting. But look at the difference. This is not congruent with the neighborhood at all. We are making a great sacrifice allowing the, the cluster, but we understand the cluster, we want to save the wetlands. But we are trusting you to take the stand of staying with the, what has already been approved of the RE cluster and keeping it RE. Please, don't put 8,000-square-foot lots on that land. It just, we are already having our properties depreciated by this, and we ask you to hold the line. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
I would move to strike the testimony as not being competent substantial evidence on the matters that were here before the board.
What? What? What did you say? What?
I moved to strike the prior testimony as no competent and substantial evidence was presented to the board on the basis for which we're here, which is consistency with future land use map.
Mr. City Attorney?
Who said that?
Ma'am?
No. What he's saying is your decision has to be based on competent substantial evidence, which is relevant facts-based evidence. Of course, any speaker can get up and say anything that they'd like to, they feel appropriate. What the attorney is saying is that he's reminding you that your decision has to be based on competent substantial evidence, which is relevant evidence.
All right.
Relevant to, to this issue, that a reasonable mind would deem adequate to render a decision. And so, you will base your decision on that.
Okay, ma'am, I see.
But he, I'm, sorry, ma'am, let me finish what I'm saying. He's asking us to strike it, that would require an action.
He could firm, I think what he's saying is, he's asking you not to take into consideration anything said that was not relevant or not competent substantial evidence in your decision.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
He's within his rights, ma'am. You can...
May I, may I speak to how this is relevant, and it is substantial?
Ma'am, are you an expert on these things?
I don't know, ma'am, sir. He's a lawyer.
Yes, ma'am. And he's, he's a lawyer, correct. You can, ma'am, I'm going to let you do it. I'm not going to let everybody else do the same thing, because it's, it's, he's carrying out the, the way this has to be done. He is within his rights to do that. I didn't agree with the striking it, but he is in his rights to, to point out that there was no evidence given in that testimony. So, if you want to go, I'll give you one minute.
Okay, the city, I assume that he's speaking about the city development plan that has repeatedly been said that this development follows that plan. I propose to you that that plan should be changed if it does not protect the property owners in where the developments are being put in.
You hear, ma'am?
And the other thing I want to say is, I am responding to what the staff in planning and develop, and zoning wrote in this proposal, in the proposal as it was stated. And I do not agree with what that says, nor does any other homeowner out here, and I wanted that to be a part of the record. It is not congruent. Anyone who rides down Carpenter Road and who has eyes to see, can see that we have more than five feet on each side of our houses. We have more than a 20-foot front door, front yard, and we have more than a 20-foot backyard. And if that is what they're saying, it's congruent with the neighborhood, it's a lie.
Your opinion is part of the record, ma'am. Did anyone like to, from the applicant? No, sir, from the applicant, the applicant's the only one that's...
I wanted to view what he said.
Go right ahead, sir.
I stand by my prior objection.
Okay. Next card, please.
Patrick Fix.
Understand, we have rules that we have to go by, by law, so we can't just make up our own rules as we go along here. Thank you. Yes, sir, your name for the record, please.
My name is Patrick Fix. We live at 3713 Chiara Drive in Carpenter Hills neighborhood, up Carpenter Road from where this development is. My wife and I decided to move to Titusville, moved to central Florida a year and a half ago. So, we've not been here that long, and we're unfamiliar with all the zoning regulations and so forth. We've learned a lot just in the brief moments beforehand. We don't want to see a change in zoning below the current requirements as well. We looked long and hard and denied living in, or chose not to live in Lake Nona, chose not to live in Viera, because it was very difficult for us to find a lot size that we liked. My lot size is 1.09 acres. So, I'm not a millennial, I'm 45, so I'm Gen X. But unlike many of the others here, I am younger, I have a young family, and I brought them here tonight, because it's important for us to declare to the council that we, we don't want to go below where you've already set. We understand the clustering, it's a good thing, but we want to draw the line, as many of the other folks had stated earlier. Beyond that, what we wanted to voice to the council is also, again, with a young family, we walk down to Fox Lake Park and that area, my wife takes my little girls all the time. The path down there's just been refinished, you know, thank you, whoever did that, I think it's in the town, right on its side. But we're concerned about safety in the area as well, when all this construction is occurring, there's going to be a lot of traffic. We're concerned about people speeding down Carpenter Road as it is now. A lot of folks like to wind their way around there quite a bit. And again, with a young family walking down there, when you're adding construction, adding residents, it's, it's, the council needs to make sure you're a part of looking into that to make sure folks are kept safe. Other than that, that's, that's all I have for saying, so.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, did you have any comments on?
Again, we'd object, we appreciate the feedback, but again, we stand by the competent substantial evidence requirement.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Tom, it looks like Sto Hart, Stewart? Stewart? Okay.
My name's Tom Stewart, I live at 3734 Thall Road. I am retired. Prior to my retirement, I was lead environmental specialist for Brevard County Natural Resources Management Office under contract to the Florida Department of Environmental Specialty, or, yeah, Environmental Protection as a system, storage system specialist. I've been peripherally involved with wetlands issues for 28 years. I'd like to say that concurrency, as Don pointed out, as part of the master plan review, is our particular concern. I'm not going to quote any figures, I don't have them at hand, but I don't think concurrency has been performed for this subdivision, per se. It was performed for the previous iteration of the development, but not for this one. I've spent the past 20-some-odd days with a front yard full of water, and most of these people have spent it with a backyard full of water. We're concerned with drainage. There's only one specific small drainage area for this development. We'd like to make sure that water supply is adequate for the development. At this point, there's a 10-inch water line that runs on, under I-95, that's made out of cast iron, that provides all of the city water for that portion of Carpenter Road. We'd like to make sure that there's no degradation of water service. I said it before during the P&amp;Z meeting, I think that putting the, the cart before the horse here, I think that, I don't want to see this turn into another Viera, I really don't. I, I don't want to wake up one morning and find myself with no water, and try to get into my car and not be able to get to it because of the flooding, to go to Publix and not be able to get out on the road because there's too much traffic. If someone can demonstrate to me in some sort of comprehensive manner that concurrency issues have been met, then I have no arguments. If they cannot, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, sir. I have a question with you.
Yeah?
Have you...
Sir, could you come up to the microphone, both of you?
Have you conducted any studies on the concurrency of, for this property and project?
No, I have not.
Have you reviewed the city of Titusville's preliminary concurrency assessment report?
Yes, I have.
And what is your issue with that assessment?
I don't believe that it actually addresses current problems and issues. I believe that it may have addressed issues in the past, but I don't think there's any demonstration that the new development meets any of the requirements for concurrency.
With that, we maintain our objection that no competent substantial evidence was presented on it.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yes. Can we ask Ms. Bisaka to maybe address those issues?
I have a concurrency evaluation dated October 19th, 2017, and the evaluation was done by three staff members, Trevor Trupagan, KB Ofusu, and Ashley Smith.
And those, and those address the water, the drainage?
It, this, it talks about potable water, and it says that there is adequate, I can give you the numbers if you want, but basically, the total water capacity is 5.429 million gallons a day. The remaining capacity, I'm sorry, less future, less current demand is 4.220, 4.220 million gallons, less future commitments, which is based on FDEP water supply allocation, and the remaining capacity is 9.76 million gallons a day. The estimated water demand of this project is 0.138 million gallons.
Okay, so we're way...
There's adequate. The wastewater, there is adequate capacity. The remaining capacity is 3.043 million gallons a day, and the estimated demand of this project is 0.0124. Again, much smaller. The traffic circulation discusses Carpenter Road, the adopted level of service E, which has a maximum capacity of 11,232 average daily trips. The current condition is, there are two segments, one is 3,480 daily trips, the other one has 4,146 daily trips, and that leaves the current, the volume-to-count ratio of 0.31 or 0.37. So, there's adequate capacity for that. We also did the capacity of Fox Lake, which again, has 11,232 average daily trip capacity with a volume-count ratio of 0.35, so well under the adopted level of service E. And this was based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Index number of 210, the average vehicle trips per unit of a weekday of 9.52, with a total average vehicle trips for development on a weekday of 666 daily trips.
Okay.
Finally, there was a recreation open space. We are required to have 841 acres of recreation and open space within the city based on the adopted level of service of eight, eight acres per thousand. Our current, I'm sorry, our required open space is 351.52 acres. Our current recreation open space is 841 acres for existing available recreation capacity of 489 acres. And the required open space for this project would be 100 and, 1.31 acres, based on a projected population of 164. And, and there was also an issue, discussion about drainage.
Yes.
Drainage is decided at the time that the project is actually designed.
Okay.
There's still several steps left in this process. And without, if a project, any project in the city does not meet the drainage level of service, it is not approved.
Okay, so we, we still have extra steps to take?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
One of the issues that came up was whether or not the master plan met the requirements of the code. And this is the first step in a multi-step process, and the, all of the master plan requirements will... master plan requirements will be met, or this will not be approved by staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, you've had your time, sir, I'm sorry. We can't have the same people coming up, we'll be here till tomorrow morning. It's just, sir, sir, next card, please.
The last card is Howard Schaffner, or Schaefer.
State your name and address, please, sir.
Howard Schaefer. I'm an old man, I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. You've heard all the talk. The big thing we need to worry about, I think, is that, as an old man, I learned your word is your bond. We made an agreement and fought in 2006 to have and agreed to this cluster that we had with RE. Now suddenly, because they're not making enough money with the houses that we had, they want to smooth the lots a bit closer, make more money, and reneg on what we agreed to. So in, in my mind, that's all you need for the council to understand. You don't go back on your word. The council already said that we could have RE cluster and do it. The other item I want to say is that, do you realize what 10-foot is? It's probably that between you three people is 10-foot. That's how far you're going to have between houses out there. Now, I could hardly walk between you three people, but with this new zoning you want, you got 10-foot between houses. That's not like our neighborhood that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Continue my objection, that no competent substantial evidence was presented on the matter before the council.
So noted. Do you have a question?
Can I ask another question?
Certainly. Of whom?
Ms. Basaka.
Okay.
We've been talking about the difference between the cluster development and our plan development. What is, what is the difference? Because to me, they look very similar.
At the time that this was previously approved, the cluster development and the plan development were two different processes, and the plan development, which was at that time called the PUD, Planned Unit Development, actually required a rezoning and a change to the comprehensive plan. With the code update, the staff looked at those two processes and said, they are so similar that we should combine them into one process called a plan development, which is exactly what we've done. And what that process has done is it allows the developer to come in and present this idea of the cluster subdivision to you without going through the change to the comprehensive plan to show plan development.
Okay. Other than that, is there any substantial difference between a cluster and a plan development?
There, the, no, the 2,000 square foot minimum is the same, there is, there's no difference in that. There is, what has happened is, in this case, there is 70 acres and 70 lots, and RE zoning is one unit an acre. So we have the same 70 units put on 70 acres, but the lots are smaller. Now, planners like that, we consider that to be less urban sprawl than the large lot subdivision, and I've lived in a large lot subdivision and I enjoyed it, but it's not a good use of, of land because it eats into a lot of natural areas where you can cluster these impacts and allow a great deal more property to be left in its natural state. That's good for a lot of things. It's better that you have a naturally functioning wetland than that you have to create stormwater. It's better that you have less asphalt, less, because there's less, that's better for the environment, there's less heat sinks, it's better for, in this case, the city will have to maintain less roads. This is definitely, in the staff's opinion, a preferable development over the, even the surrounding zoning, which is the large lot zoning, is a much more impactful to the, to the environment.
So basically, we have 70 houses and 70 acres, but we've taken part of that property, so to speak, and made it into a conservation area.
Yes, ma'am. And when, the question was, how did staff determine that this was consistent with the surrounding? If you will look at the zoning map on page, I want to get this, on page 249, you'll see that the RE zoning is to the west of that property and to the south of that property. And what you have here is, with the proposed plan, you have a density which is consistent with RE. The difference is, it is put into a smaller footprint.
Okay. I have one other question, I can't remember what it was. I apologize.
Been there, done that. When you think of it, let us know, okay?
I'll let you know.
Sir?
I didn't know if there were any further comments.
I, I was just about to ask that, so if you will hold on one moment. Are there any other cards to call, clerk?
No, sir.
All right. You wish to rebut?
Yes, sir. Real briefly, counsel, thank you for comments tonight, we appreciate the citizens' concerns. I would like to submit for the record an affidavit by Mr. Clark Maxwell, the NIA appraiser and licensed state certified general appraiser. And without reading the entire affidavit, as it will be a matter of the record and his professional opinion, the development proposed on the subject property would have no adverse effect, effect upon the values of the neighboring properties. To the extent that was a concern, we're submitting evidence. What has been established on the record is, the proposed development is consisted with the city's comp plan and future land use. The currently allows, the comp plan, I believe, it currently allows 130 units, we're proposing 70. The current RE zoning allows 70 units, we're proposing 70 units. The proposed development meets the city's land regulation, development regulations and the preliminary comp plan concurrency, or excuse me, the current comprehensive, I can't even read my own writing, the currency, concurrency requirements of the city. Additionally, we presented evidence that the proposed development will not decrease neighboring property values. We presented evidence from the real estate professionals that the proposed development is a, brings a style and size of homes and lots that the workforce of coming to Titusville prefers, and we've presented evidence that we are increasing the amount of wetlands protected and the value of, the environmental values of doing such. And with that, we respectfully request the city approve the requested rezoning as competent substantial evidence has been presented before this board to meet the standard required.
Thank you, sir. I will close the public hearing at this time, and we're into counsel's discussion. Go right ahead.
I understand the concern of the residents, that the, the lot sizes are less than the lot sizes on Carpenter Road. On the other hand, I really like the idea of having that property put aside as a conservation So, under the cluster plan, as it stands right now, they can go in and they can put 70 houses in, the lots might be slightly larger from what I can see, but it also looks like if they do that, then we're going to destroy wetlands. And looking at what happened to Houston after those hurricanes, we need, we need our wetlands, we need our grounds to be able to absorb the water, because I understand, part of what happened in Houston was that there was no place for the water to go, and so everybody got flooded. So I don't ever want to see us having those kind of problems.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask for, well, the city attorney, will you please go over the rules that we have to adhere to as far as this type of item?
Okay.
For the council and also for the people out there.
The phrase competent substantial evidence has been used several times tonight, so I can first give you a definition of that again. Competent substantial evidence is competent evidence that is presented by a person qualified to provide evidence on the subject about which the person is testifying, is reliable or credible, which you are the judges of that, is sufficiently relevant material to the ultimate determination that a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support the conclusion reached. Substantial evidence is evidence that provides a factual basis from which a fact that issue may reasonably be inferred. The requirement that decisions be supported by competent substantial evidence ensures that local government boards base their decisions on facts adduced at this hearing and on the application of appropriate zoning principles and objects as set forth in the zoning ordinances. Some of the other things we discussed pursuant to Florida Statute 166.033, if counsel were to deny a development permit, you must be able to cite the applicable portions of the code, comp plan, or other law that justify your reliance for, in support of your denial. Also pursuant to our code, on a petition to rezone property, the initial burden is on the property owner to prove the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with your zoning code. If so, the burden then shifts to the city to be able to show by competent substantial evidence there is legitimate public purpose to deny this require, this request.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So this is my takeaway. Number one, whether I like or don't like is irrelevant to this. So what we have is a threshold that, what the city attorney just said. So that is based on evidence, and I don't discredit, I don't discredit as property owners within the community that somehow there's, that is not relevant or competent. I think that you are, from a perspective as a citizen, so the concerns are valid. So that's just one take, I guess personally. But what I don't see is, what I do see in front of me is, number one, from at least professionals that, you know, you all provided information in respective fields as well, which was very helpful, because I think it painted a picture of exactly the intent of what you're trying to do, but even with the intent of what you're doing, is what you're doing relative to the rules that the City of Titusville has said. And at that point, you know, as a city, you, you, you have to be real careful, not just on development of property, but also, if you start saying, you can't build here, you've got to have some really good reasons. In the state of Florida, the you can't build here has historically been a bit of a challenge, not solely for environmental issues, but for other social issues, and so there is a very large threshold, threshold if you say no to development for some reason. So, being said, I didn't see, I, I've seen no evidence that would result in denying, that specifically that I could cite relative to any rules we have on the books. I did hear some citizens' concerns about comparative to Brevard County, how do we, side by side, how do we at least define that role to the public, and so I hear you loud and clear on that, I believe. And I, and I would be happy to take a look at that and just publicly, what, what do we say that we try to do? Although I feel that our code, specifically over the past few years, has been changed, adopted, and to the hard work of staff, so I feel competent in what they're providing for us is relevant and with the needs of the city at this point. Specific to at least the impact of the rezoning that's put before us compared to what previously had been brought before and provided is okay, I'm looking at it, and it's specifically, less impact to wetlands by acres, it holds more area, the roadways are less, the, I mean, all of those things, so I, I really can't cite anything that would say no. And that's the threshold that I, I believe that I have to have, but I do hear the concerns. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir. Member Nelson?
I'm just going to add, I think, and I can ask Mr. Broome, but I think in order for us to turn down a project, we would have to have expert, expert testimony in some form saying, this is, the, the ordinance is being violated, or these are specific reasons why we cannot approve this. Am I correct?
That's correct. In fact, your resolution on quasi-judicial procedures provides that standing alone opinions and objections of interested parties are not factual evidence and not a sound basis for denial of a petition or application for zoning-related matter unless it is supported by facts, ordinance criteria, or comprehensive plan requirements.
Okay.
So your decision is going to be based on facts deduced today, and your denial would have to be based on competent substantial evidence and facts with regard to comprehensive plan and your zoning principles.
Okay. So basically, if we were to deny it, one, it would be inappropriate because we don't have a legal basis for it, correct?
That is for this council to determine based on what was presented to you.
You're smiling. And then secondly, if we were to deny it, we would go back to the prior plan, which is substantially the same as the new plan. That would be my opinion, they're very, very similar.
Thank you, ma'am. Member Diesel?
I think we're all learning a lesson in quasi-judicial, and many of you certainly came tonight and stated things that would be stated in a normal council meeting, and we would be able to say, as council member Diesel, I really don't like that, I want to do this. But with this, quasi-judicial, lawyers included, we have to have evidence to turn them down. And everything that we heard legally and from staff supported the fact that there's enough water, that there's enough roads for traffic. So I just want to make it really understood that this isn't just something we can say, well, you know, and I can feel your pain, I understand where you're coming from, but we are in a quasi-judicial setting, and we have to go and have evidence that says this is not legal and cannot be done. And at that point, this point, I don't see that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I see none. At this point, we need a motion, and I know the city attorney would like to make, like to have the person who makes the motion read their motion, or state the whole motion, which would be basically either, on the page, it says recommended action or turn down the recommended action. Do I have a motion?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve ordinance 4027, amending. That's a, yeah, thank you, that's a.
Res zoning.
Thank you. That's a motion for the rezoning number 3-27 and ordinance number 4027, amending ordinance number 5, 1993 of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending this, I'm sorry? Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yeah.
That concludes that action. Go on to our next thing unless somebody would like to take a break. Continue.
Thank you.
Ordinance.
Sir, I believe you want to go, you want to go back to consent, sir?
Right, consent agenda.
Mayor, if I, if I could just clarify for counsel what you were pointing out, what you're saying is when we, we do a motions, as opposed to just saying so moved, we really need to say motion to approve or deny and state the ordinance number, so we say motion to approve or deny, and state the ordinance number, so we understand clearly what the motion is. Thank you.
Okay. Item ten, ordnance, no, that's the wrong one. Let me get my page back here. Consent agenda, item eight, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, I believe you want, want council to pull any items that they would request?
Yes.
And any cards that are available for these?
Yes. Any, any cards on the item first?
No, sir.
Any member of council want to take any of these items off, the consent agenda? I see none. I guess it's up to you at this point. No, no, no. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, do that, do that.
I turned it off. Move to approve consent agenda, eight A through eight L.
I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second now. You read them.
Yes, sir, consent agenda items for the record, eight A, approved change order number one in the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred seventy dollars to the annual contract with USIC locating services LLC of Indianapolis, Indiana, for utility locating services and authorize the city manager to execute the change order. Consent agenda item eight B, approve advisability to amend chapter thirty of the land development regulations to prevent development of conservation subdivisions within the area of critical concern. Consent agenda item eight C, approve the request to purchase eight hundred megawatt, megahertz radio equipment and authorize Soul Source Vendor Communications International to perform programming and installation of equipment contained in their formal quote for a total cost not to exceed one hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and authorize the city manager to issue and execute said instruments necessary for this purchase. Consent agenda item eight D, approve the purchase of a five-year turnkey maintenance agreement from Environmental Products of Florida Incorporated of Tampa, Florida, in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars annually for, for a total of five year expenditure of sixty-six thousand dollars and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item eight E, approve and execute the attached utility easement agreement with Cannaveral Port Authority. Consent agenda item eight F, award employee assistant program services to Aetna Behavioral Health LLC, one fifty-one Farmington Avenue, Hartford, Connecticut, effective the first day of December two thousand seventeen, which shall remain in full force and effect for the period of one year initial term and three optional one-year administrative renewals until terminated in accordance with the terms and agreement of the rate guarantee for forty-eight months. Consent agenda item eight G, approve piggyback of Brevard County contract B four one five five five, traffic signal construction, rehab, maintenance, and emergency repairs to the Traffic Control Devices LLC of Atmott Springs, Florida, in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand dollars, five hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cents, to replace traffic signal at State Route four oh five, South Street, and Park Avenue. Consent agenda item eight H, approve the request to transfer the remaining funds of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars from project Z zero one eight zero six into new project number Z zero one eight four six, and authorize the city manager to issue and executes any instruments necessary for the purchase of bunker gear washer and dryer for the fire department in accordance with established purchasing policies. Consent agenda item eight I, approve the third amendment to the lease agreement with T-Mobile South LLC for the use of the South Street Water Tower, subject to the resolution of agreement and terms by the city manager or city attorney, and authorize the mayor to execute the amendment. Consent agenda item eight J, approve the use of National Joint Powers Alliance contract number two zero one eight one two zero seven one six, NAF, for the purchase of five two thousand eighteen Ford interceptor vehicles from Allen J Fleet Sales at fifty thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-three cents for each, for a total amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Two two thousand eighteen Ford interceptor traffic vehicles at fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents each from Allen J Fleet Sales for a total amount of one hundred and six thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Approve the use of Florida Sheriff's Association bid number FSA one six VEH two four point zero for the purchase of one two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Traverse vehicle from Stingray Chevrolet in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars. And approve the use of Sheriff's Association bid FSA one seven VEL two zero point zero slash FSA one seven dash VEL one five point zero for the purchase of one two thousand eighteen Ford SWAT transport van from DeValle Ford in the amount of fifty-two thousand six hundred and seven dollars. Consent agenda item eight K, approve and execute the attached utility easement agreement with Florida Power and Light Company. Consent agenda item eight L, approve advisability to amend the code ordinances, chapter twenty-one utilities, charging sewer rates for discharges to city sewers from water cooled air conditioning served by irrigation waters.
Thank you, sir. I saw no ordinances in their resolutions, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing it, not hearing any. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sound? Passes unanimously. We now are on item nine, ordinances, second reading in public hearing. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations relating to the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district by amending chapter twenty-eight zoning, specifically amending section twenty-eight fifty-four use table, section twenty-eight seventy-three live-work unit, section twenty-eight ninety-one advertising agency, section twenty-eight ninety-five arts, crafts, and hobby shop, section twenty-eight ninety-six art studio, section twenty-eight ninety-nine bakery retail, section twenty-eight one hundred barber beauty shop salon, section twenty-eight one oh one bed and breakfast dens, creating section twenty-eight one oh one point one bicycle sales service, amending section twenty-eight point one oh nine ceramic shop, section twenty-eight one eleven clothing and shoe stores, section twenty-eight one twelve convenience store without retail gasoline sales, section twenty-eight one fifteen delicatessence, section twenty-eight one seventeen drinking establishments, bar tavern lounge, section twenty-eight one twenty-three fitness center, section twenty-eight one twenty-four florist, section twenty-eight one twenty-seven gift shops, section twenty-eight one thirty-three ice cream parlor, section twenty-eight one thirty-five insurance office, section twenty-eight one thirty-six jewellers, section twenty-eight one thirty-nine legal office, section twenty-eight one sixty photographic shops, section twenty-eight one sixty-two printing and copying stores, section twenty-eight one sixty-four professional offices, section twenty-eight one sixty-seven restaurants, section twenty-eight one seventy screen printing shops, section twenty-eight one seventy-two spa, section twenty-eight one seventy-four tailor services, section twenty-eight one seventy-seven travel agencies, section twenty-eight one eighty-two video game arcades, section twenty-eight two forty-three government facilities, section twenty-eight three twenty-five urban mixed-use UMU, to amend allowable uses and conditions of uses within the urban mixed-use zoning district, amending chapter thirty development standards, specifically creating section thirty-two eighty-three on-street parking credit, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action five zero. On twenty-six April two thousand sixteen, city council directed staff to initiate changes to the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district to facilitate the city's goal of becoming a trail town and capitalize on the opportunities that the coast-to-coast trail represents. The goal of these amendments is to allow for the reuse of property to create a walkable pedestrian-focused environment that is an amenity to the property owners and residents within UMU zoning district and the users of the trail. At a public workshop, staff and interested citizens was held on sixteen February two thousand seventeen. The general consensus was non-automobile oriented uses should be allowed on, should be allowed on any property in UMU zoning districts, provided certain minimum conditions are met. The consensus continued at the second Public Planning and Zoning Commission on five July two thousand seventeen. The attached ordinance amends the UMU zoning district by changing the allowable uses, amending the purposes and statements of the zoning district to better reflect the goals of the area, and amending the landscaping and parking requirements to be more flexible. The overall goal of these changes is to make reuse and redevelopment of property more feasible within UMU zoning district and allow uses which, which complement the coast-to-coast trail.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Busaka, do you have a presentation, or?
Only if you have questions.
Any questions from council? I see none. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir, we have two cards. It's Tom Altiff and then Heather.
All right. You will both come up front. Name for the record, please. Oops, you went the other way. Sir.
Tom Altiff, three Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida.
Thank you, sir.
I have mixed feelings about this, and first I wanna compliment city staff for working with me and answering my questions. I have two concerns about this. I have property at seven oh seven Main Street, and if you look at what I just hit, I only had one copy of that, I was better prepared for the zoning meeting, but I had forgotten about this one, and I came here at the last minute from my store. There are two properties that are left out of the UMU. One is completely surrounded by UMU property, and the other, Boggs Gas, is, is not. My concern with both of these properties is that if they are in the UMU at such time as they're sold, they will have to conform to the UMU requirements. As it is now, one of them's M one, light industrial, the other one is M two, heavy industrial. How are you gonna get any developers to come down here and put money in this area? And I'm for improving this area, believe me. Whenever you have two industrial parcels that they're faced with, and they don't know what they're going to actually be in the long run, the M two could, could morph into anything. This is not, what effectively we're doing here is we're freezing this area as it is for the next ten to fifteen years, because downtown's gonna have to be infilled first. And there's gonna have to be a need for other properties with these types of commercial activities before anyone's gonna come across the railroad tracks. You know, and you can look at many communities and see the same thing. I'm one hundred percent in favor of improving this area. I think it'd be good for the citizens there. It'd be a way to fight the, the crime that, that takes place there. So, effectively what's happening, I have a large lot next to my building, and effectively what's happening is, I'm not gonna be able to do anything with that property. What I'm asking this council to do is to include those other two parcels in the urban mixed-use, and I won't have any objection.
Any questions of Mr. Altiff? Yes, go ahead.
Probably for Ms. Busaka, is there a reason why they are not included?
If you're asking me, I want to make sure I understand what Mr. Altiff said. Mr. Altiff, you're concerned about two properties that are currently not zoned UMU in that area?
Yes, ma'am.
I was not here when this happened, UMU is a relatively old zoning, but my understanding was that it was a compromise so that the neighbors could feel like their residential areas were being protected, and the existing industrial area could feel like they were able to move forward. The UMU zoning is very, currently very restrictive. If you look on the summary page, on page two oh two, you can see that most uses that are permitted within there are only allowed at the intersection of DeLeon and Park. And so, I believe that they were not extended to UMU because that would have made those two properties that at that time were probably ongoing industrial areas to be non-conforming. What, what Mr. Altiff is asking would require a different ordinance, because the ordinance tonight is not advertised in such a way that would allow that. And if it indeed meant rezoning the property, then there's two ways to rezone property. One is for the property owner to start that, and the second is for the city to administratively rezone it, so we would notify the property owner, and then we would find out whether or not they felt like that was a good idea, and I'm sure you'd hear from them. So, if the council would like us to go back, work with Mr. Altiff, and bring back to you the options that it would take to go forward with what he's suggesting, we could do that. I think it would be helpful for you to understand exactly the implications, and we'd be happy to work with Mr. Altiff to do that.
Okay, that would be great.
I think that's a great idea. Do we need a motion on that? Just give it back, okay? You want a motion? Yes?
Well, what are you looking for?
I think what we bring back is advisability anyway to, to explain what it is that we're actually proposing.
I think staff has enough for, they'll put advisability for you on your next agenda item.
Okay. We'll take a look.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item.
Do we have one more card?
Oops, one more card, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Heather Summy, one three two four Indian River Avenue. I'm for the rezoning, the urban mixed and the trail town. My main concern, again, is the crime plan to make that appealing to business owners. Just three weeks ago, my mom was burglarized, and it was a lot this time, not just smash and grab, it was a lot missing from the property. Because I don't wanna go into specifics, I don't know if I'm compromising anything, but, so it was very substantial. So, in order for people to think that area is improved on the reputation and to bring businesses, I'd like to know if there's a plan from the city to see if the crime can be improved, either a community project, a local lighting, anything to deter, or even to improve, or even make a community effort. I know I put it on Facebook, and through my friends, a lot of people are hesitant on reporting anything suspicious because they don't wanna get involved, and it's more than just my neighborhood, or that neighborhood, that people just don't wanna report because they don't wanna be in trouble, or, you know, I don't know what the different reasons are, but I'm sure they're varying, and I'm just concerned about that area continuing to have that reputation, and therefore, what all this effort, it would be a moot point. So, that's my question, is there a plan other than the zoning? The next one would be improving the, the crime reputation.
Ms. Busaka.
Yeah. The, the concerns about safety and crime were brought up at the, at the public meetings. We have shared those with the police department, we have advised Public Works about the lighting issues, but I'm sorry, I, I don't know any more than the fact that we've kind of handed those issues out. I'm sure we can provide some feedback from those departments.
Yeah, the, the lighting issue, I know we're about six or so years behind our lighting plan, and as, as you were aware, when we went through the budgeting process, we're ten million dollars short on execution of what we need. So, lighting is an issue. The white ways are, are one of our primary concerns for safety of pedestrians and this area, as you suggest, but we just have not been able to fund them.
So, our hold is funding, not have a plan? So, the plan, there is no plan?
We have plans for improved lighting throughout the city.
Right.
We've just not been able to fund them.
Well, that, then that's gonna push the improvement of the trail town. If you don't focus, if that is your goal, and that is gonna bring in the millennials, the, keep the Gen X, improve the. keep the Gen X, improve the Titusville reputation, and bring more businesses in, they're looking to that, more things to do than you're pushing your income by not focusing on that area for the lighting.
Completely agree with you.
So is there, again, is there a plan other than we don't have the money?
I can't answer that question.
I don't know that there is a plan in place that we know definitely, next year we're going to have X amount of money. One of the problems for next year is there's an additional homestead exemption that will be on the ballot, and that will decrease our funding for our city.
Okay.
So you vote for the homestead exemption, and basically, you're taking the money out of the city coffers, and those are gone, and we're going to have to make them up. And that's going to be, I think they said $370,000. Doesn't sound like a lot, but...
It would be closer to half a million.
Okay.
But with those $370,000, how much is it going to allocate to the crime plan and lighting?
Well, that's sort of it. I mean, it's sort of like, we have to figure out how to make up that much money. City manager says it's more like half a million dollars that we're going to have to figure out how to make up that money and keep the city running. And of course, the hurricanes turned around and knocked out a lot of the lighting.
I understand.
So we're sort of playing catch-up. My hope is that with the new companies coming in, the new development coming in, that we'll have more tax revenue, that we can sit down and address those kind of things. We hired extra police this year, but we're still, I think, behind. And city manager can probably tell me that or not, but I think we are behind still on police officers.
Yes, ma'am, we are. We're catching up. We were waiting on the results of our cops grant, and we should be hearing back in that sometime this month whether or not we were awarded that grant or not.
So...
And a quick question regarding the police statement. Wasn't there specific, and I, someone said something at the zoning board, and I can't remember how I heard it, that there were specifically police officers, a certain type of police officers, that were hired specifically to patrol that area? Do you know anything, C, S?
Well...
No, no, ma'am.
Do you know anything about that? I thought I heard something that there was a couple that were specifically hired to patrol the Main Street area.
She's confusing the safe words.
Was that, maybe I'm confusing?
No, no, there's no specific officers.
The officers are aware of it. I know Chief Law is very aware of Main Street. Some of the things that will happen with police, you'll never see, you'll never know about, that's just part of police work.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Like I said, I mean, it...
But it doesn't mean they're not working on it.
It would just make, I think, even the urban mixed community more helpful and even more positive towards the trail town because they're putting all this effort in the hopes of their property being increased and so forth, and then if we don't know we're going to get help until six years from now, how's that going to keep our incentive on our end going?
Well, and you got to realize too, as people move in, people don't want to have other citizens watching them commit crimes. You know what I'm saying? I mean, there's nothing like doing a drug deal in front of, you know, half a dozen good citizens that would pick up the phone and report you. You really want to go around the corner.
Well, I'm that corner.
Yep. So as those people move in, they're going to want to go around the corner.
I understand that. Again, it's, crime's going to be anywhere. It could be your next-door neighbor in a nice neighborhood making meth in their backyard. But I'm just saying, in that area, if we want to pursue the trail town goal, then I think that comes into play, that maybe $5, like, yeah, I put $5 in my savings account, it's like a little bit to put towards that. You know, I'm not saying $5, but I would use that as a symbol, as in like, little bit towards the trail town, because then if you wait till six years, and then you start saving for the lighting and saving for the improvements, then you're already six years behind.
Right.
Just like investing your 401K.
So you have to rely on the police and say, okay, they know it's a problem, and...
Right. Is there any idea that you guys want to bring to me that I can maybe get the community involved, like, kind of like community nosy neighbors, you know, kind of?
Community watch?
Yes, but does it seem like it's even out there anymore?
I think we have two officers here that probably talk to you about it, and I would say probably our city manager or our police chief can talk to you about it.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, did you want to talk to this person?
Yes, sir, thank you. And specific to council, and to keep it germane to the issue before us, specifically, this was relative to the rezoning, and I'm in agreement that, I would like to seek more advisability on that, because if, I would prefer, I think, to see it all go, and then upon sale of the property, and then someone, we look at it then, something like that. Ms. Heather, or Ms. Summy? Ma'am?
Ma'am.
I have maybe a question or two for you.
Yes, of course.
I think, I think what I hear, so, and this is, in keeping in relation to the scope of what I think it is that we're trying to achieve relative for the purpose of this rezoning, since I've been on council, I think this has been one, this is going to be the one that's going to get me before my days are over, and that's sad, and I hate that feeling, because I think that on Main Street, when I drive down it, I have yet to go a three-week period where I drive down Main Street between US-1 and Park, where I don't get a few extra waves, and it ain't because I'm handsome, you know? So it's ongoing, it's continuous. I know that we may have made substantial efforts. Our law enforcement does, I know that those efforts are made, but at the end of it, here's what I don't think is going to happen. I don't think by one or two citizens simply calling, it's going to change. I don't think that by just doing a zoning change, it's going to change. I think it takes more capacity than what our current citizens have on their own. They can't do it, otherwise they would have. And because of that, in the same way that we focus targeted with plans and with consistent revisiting and debate on what are we doing for our CRA, I think takes the same amount of effort specific to this street. I do. I think it's, it missed the border of our CRA by that much, and because of that, it just, there's effort, there's trying, but pinpoint laser focus for the next 10 years is what it would take, I think, to change it, because you, we have a huge investment coming into it. We have these huge pieces going into it, but it's the laser focus tying it all together for the people who are there today and the people who are the future. We're making steps, but I think that our community there, because we have only a few residents that are consistently there for long periods of time, it's transient in nature, we just don't get it, and I would, I hope that for council's consideration, that possibly to bring back some advisability on how can we put together a plan that is long-term, multifaceted, that deals with all of the issues on that street? And one of our objectives this year was statistical poverty. That was, that is one of our goals, that we said, yes, we will address that this year, and I can think of no other place besides maybe one or two. We're making a dent in the South Street Target area. We are making an actionable dent. I love it. And I just could only imagine if we could just take that same methodology and say, let's add it to this street, which half the property on that street is either nonprofit or government-owned. That's a fact. So the other half is resident. That's not a lot to have to switch around. We just need capacity from government to help it out a little bit. So that would be my hope, that we, you all might support advisability on how do we do that, so then we can get citizens to engage.
I mean, I approve the zoning. I don't want to discourage that at all. That's not what my point, my point is, I want this to go forward, and that's where I see the weakness. And I know there's that workshop that you guys would do in their city. I know, I'll say this, but quote-unquote hookers were mentioned in a weakness, and that's not just, it's crime, and it's not specifically the hookers, it's crime, period, in different facets. But that was mentioned in the workshop that I just happened to not being able to attend, so it's obviously known. I do want to push forward. That's why I want to get involved, so that doesn't get pushed back.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have to comment that one of the problems is that half that are residents are probably the same people that are waving to you, so...
Don't disagree, sir.
Yeah, we'll have to, and I agree with you that we, a concentrated effort is going to have to, because nothing else has been able to change that situation heretofore.
Sir, do you feel that it might be worth having advisability on how to move forward with that? Or as a council?
Sir, I'd like to remind you that we are working on your neighborhood revitalization study.
Correct.
That you suggested, that we'll probably have this area incorporated in that. We just began that, so that may be what you're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be fine. All right, city attorney, I think you got the next one.
We need to vote on this one, sir.
Oh, sorry. Did we?
Need a motion, a second.
We have a motion and a second?
No, we need a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 37-2017, creating a trail town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
In order for, I thought staff was going to bring us advisability relative to...
Yeah, I did too.
Right, so would it be maybe prudent to table this until further?
That would have to be a different agenda item, different ordinance. It cannot be incorporated into this ordinance.
So by denial of this, or can we, can we, can we table until?
Well, if you do, it doesn't help you, because this will not go anywhere, and the other one is a separate process, different advertising, different, everything.
Right, okay.
This is uses, the other item's an actual rezoning of a property.
Okay, so we'll do this, and then you'll give us advisability on the other. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item.
Ordinance number 38-2017, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances relating to fences by amending Chapter 6 Buildings and Building Regulations, specifically amending Section 656 required inspection approval prior to use for occupancy relating to permits for fences, amending Chapter 30 Development Standards related to fences and non-residential development, specifically amending Section 3182 height and location requirements, and Section 3183 interior high-security fences, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this Section 5.0. The city's current regulations relating to fences and walls is difficult to interpret and enforce. Therefore, staff has developed an ordinance that is consistent with current utilization of high-security fences. Specifically, the proposed ordinance sets forth the following: clarifies that construction or major repair of fence requires a building permit, provides that the city manager or designee may waive permits for fence repairs in the event of a declared state of emergency, makes security fence requirements consistent in planned industrial development and industrial zoning districts, permits the use of high-security fencing where required by federal or state regulation or program, and clarifies the placement of barbed wire on high-security fences. And Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Ms. Busaka, do you have a presentation or just answering questions? Answering questions. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? I see none. Clerk, do we have any cards on this?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion on this?
I do have a question. Ms. Busaka clarifies that construction or major repair of a fence requires a building permit. That one, I'm sure you can clarify that for me, but that bothers me a little bit with, are we going to start having permits to repair backyard fences?
We currently do have a permit, and this, what this clarifies is that if the fence or wall is repaired by more than 50%, then you have to get a permit, and that is our current standard.
And there are exceptions for post-storm repairs?
Yes, sir, because we saw a great deal of that this year, as you can imagine.
Okay.
And what we're talking about is just putting it back up, the same fence, just replacing that, or repairing that fence.
But if there's not a storm, and a piece of your fence or a part of your fence, well, it could even just be one of our little, you know, August storms.
If 50% of it is knocked down, then you're okay. If 51% of it is knocked down, then you need to come in and get a permit.
Any further discussion from counsel? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this item. Go right ahead.
Right ahead. Move to approve ordinance number 38-2017 relating to high-security fences.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call vote. Thought I was going to do it this time. Clerk, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item.
Ordinance number 39-2017, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending Chapter 21 Utilities, Article 4 Water and Sewer Rates and Charges, and Building Procedure, specifically amending Section 21243(c) water meter charges, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The water meter charge, which is subject to the proposed ordinance, is a deposit paid by customers who wish to secure temporary water service from the city during construction. This deposit is returned to customer, to the customer upon the installation of the permanent water meter and return of the temporary meter. The cost for the deposit is related to the cost of the meter assembly and the equipment used to connect to the city fire hydrant. City delivers and installs and tests the meter assembly for free. The change, the proposed changes will create, will correct a relic portion of the code that is inconsistent with the other code provisions. As the proposed amendment reflects the city's longstanding practice, the impact of this ordinance is to remove an inconsistency within the code.
Ms. Busaka? Any questions for Ms. Busaka? I see none. Are there any cards on this, clerk?
Yes, sir.
Close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion on this item? See none. I'll entertain a motion. Somebody's got to do it.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 39-2017.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item is rezoning application.
Yes, sir, you're at 10A now?
Whoops, oh, sorry, we did that one, didn't we?
Sir.
10A, yes. Actually, it's very memorable. 10A is ordinance, so, city attorney?
Yes, sir, this is ordinance number 41-2017, the capital improvement element annual update. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville for the 2018-2022 horizon relating to the capital improvement element, and providing for an effective date.
Section 163.1377-3B of the Florida statute requires the city's five-year capital improvement program of the capital improvement element to be updated annually. All local governments are required to include a capital improvement element in the comprehensive plan that considers the need for and location of public facilities, and provides a component that outlines the principles for construction, extension, or increasing the capacity of the public facilities, as well as a component that outlines principles for correcting existing public facilities deficiencies, which are necessary to implement the comprehensive plan. The planning period for this element is five years, and again, this is your first reading.
Okay, it's first reading. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I have one. And sir, as, on fiscal year '22, on the Eco Heritage...
On fiscal year '22, on the Eco Heritage Trail, I think we're at about 1.7... seven, which is just, it's a substantial jump. Uh, let's see if I can get the page on that. I was just trying to maybe better understand what the substantial jump in that was.
Ms. Busaka?
I believe that this is what Public Works does frequently, which is to be optimistic that in the out-years, that we will be able to catch up with some of our wish list.
Okay, thank you.
And again, as previously discussed, we're behind in many areas, and you recall during the budget process, we put zero dollars towards facilities this year.
Right, thanks, sir.
Any other questions on this item? Uh, clerk, are there any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
All right, go on to the next item.
Yes, sir, the next item is Small Scale Amendment Number Three, two thousand seventeen, in plan of development rezoning with master plan rezoning for two thousand seventeen. This includes ordinances number forty-two, twenty-seventeen, and forty-three, twenty-seventeen. I'll read both those ordinances at this time. Ordinance number forty-two, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by changing the land use designation on a portion of a forty-four point five acre parcel located on the east side of State Road four oh five, approximately point two miles north of Foxlake Road, from the conservation future land use designation to the high-density residential land use designation, providing for an effective date. Ordinance number forty-three, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five, nineteen ninety-three, of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present multifamily high-density residential R-three, multifamily medium-density residential R-two, and open space and recreation O-R zoning to planned development P-D zoning on a portion of a forty-four point five acre parcel and a two-point-seven-three acre parcel located on the east side of State Road four oh five, approximately point two miles north of Foxlake Road, and providing for an effective date.
The applicant, William Alcock, on behalf of the owner, Foxlake Hammock LLC, is requesting to amend the land use on approximately nine point two-five-four acres and rezone approximately twenty-five point six-seven acres of two properties totaling approximately forty-eight acres located south, east of South Street, State Road four oh five, and north of Foxlake Road. The request is to amend the land use map from medium-density residential and conservation land use designations to high-density residential land use designation. The request also proposes to rezone from multifamily high-density residential R-three, multifamily medium-density residential R-two, and open space and O-R zoning district to a new planned development P-D zoning with master plan for the purposes of constructing a new residential subdivision with sixty-one lots. The lots will be a minimum of fifty feet wide and six thousand square feet in area. A P-D zoning requires thirty-five percent of the twenty-five point six-seven acre development to be dedicated to open space. The portions of the property not included within the P-D are wetlands, which will be dedicated to Saint John's River Management District with a conservation easement. Ms. Busaka is available to answer any of your questions, and this is your first reading.
Any questions for Ms. Busaka? Go right ahead.
Planning and zoning commission?
Oh, yes, ma'am, they unanimously recommended approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, clerk, do we have any cards on this item?
The applicant is here, only if counsel has questions.
Counsel, any questions? We have none. Go to the next item, this is first reading. Old business. Item A.
Yes, sir, on ten October two thousand seventeen, city council approved advisability with regard to youth engagement programs and authorized thirty thousand dollars to the CDBG grant programs as matching funds and outline additional funding criteria. On twenty-four October two thousand seventeen, council unanimously approved that the programs meet one of the following, meet one of the following criteria: mentoring and/or counseling programs, drug and crime prevention programs before and after-school programs. Additionally, council requested that all employees and volunteers working within youth programs be required to pass background checks. The CBDDG application, approval, and monitoring process is rigorous and includes the following provisions: the program is a reimbursable grant, background checks are required for all volunteers and staff, maintenance of records to conform, to confirm that the program serves low and moderate-income individuals, and funding may be limited for those programs that are new or lack experience. Staff is seeking confirmation to move forward with issuing an amendment to the CBDDG request for proposals already released for FY nineteen with the above referenced criteria so as to afford those interested agencies ample time to respond by eleven December two thousand seventeen, which is the deadline for the funding. Staff has included as an attachment to this report the CDBG eligibility reporting and scoring criteria for all proposals. Additionally, staff has provided a program timeline, funding history, and public service programs as an example of typical funding agreements for counsel's information. And Ms. Franklin is available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Franklin?
Yes, ma'am. Is theoretically, is Parks and Rec able to apply for this as an entity?
Yes, they can apply and respond to the RFP, but not under public services. If they choose to make any infrastructure improvements to any of the facilities, it would fall under a different category.
Okay, thank you.
Member Stokel?
Um, have we received any applications as of yet, or do you know approximately how many people may have picked up an application for this?
Um, we haven't received any responses yet. We have a technical workshop coming up on the twenty-seventh of this month, so I expect some after that. But I know all of the current recipients have received the current application.
Do you know if any of the current recipients would meet the criteria that we set forth at our last council meeting? With the added provisions?
There would be a couple that would meet your before and after-school programs and your mentoring and counseling.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, yes, we have more. Member Diesel?
Um, just looking at the following activities are ineligible. I guess that's page three oh one. It goes down, and I understand all of them, and perhaps I need a little more explanation on purchase of equipment. What's your, what's your thought or explanation of not being able to purchase equipment?
That's a HUD restriction. CDBG funds cannot be used to purchase equipment because they view it as something that the agency could receive income on. You can lease equipment with CDBG funds, but not purchase the equipment.
Okay, and I guess my, my vision on that, when I read that, would be, let's say there is a before and after-school care situation, and there were, you know, chairs, is that equipment? Purchase of chairs would be?
That would be more of a furnishing, and there's probably a gray area with that. I know that the regulations say the lease of equipment and furnishings, so I would have to get clarification.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I was kind of looking for, because as I looked this over, and having been somebody who had put together, I didn't put together, Parks and Rec put them together, but I was a recreation supervisor, there was a lot of equipment that facilitated us running a program. And a program without equipment's kind of in trouble. So I think it's not any problem for me, I just want to make sure there's no sticking points, or somebody comes in and they want to start a program, but they can't have any equipment. So I'm, I'm sure we can work that out.
Any other questions? I see none. We do need action on this item. Authorized amendment to fiscal year two thousand nineteen, CDBG request for proposal, for proposal to include criteria for additional youth engagement programs.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries.
In November two thousand sixteen, Florida voters approved constitutional amendment two, allowing medical marijuana use within the state. On ten January two thousand seventeen, council adopted ordinance number one dash two thousand seventeen to establish a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of medical marijuana facilities to prevent, to permit sufficient time to develop regulations. On thirteen June two thousand seventeen, the moratorium was extended and will now expire five January two thousand eighteen. Senate Bill eight A, copy is within your packet, signed into law on twenty-three June two thousand seventeen, sets forth rules regulating several aspects of medical marijuana dispensaries as shown on, in the, in the summary. The state has given local jurisdictions two options for regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries. Local jurisdictions may prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries or allow dispensaries with limitations, as long as the limitations are no more stringent than regulations for pharmacies, except that medical marijuana dispensaries cannot be located closer to five hundred feet from schools. A map showing the zoning districts where pharmacies may be located and the five-hundred-foot exclusion area are a part of your packet. Based on state regulations, the city has three options regarding medical marijuana dispensaries. The city can prohibit dispensaries within the city, allow dispensaries within the same regulations that are currently in the LDRs for pharmacies, or amend the current regulations for pharmacy in response to state law. This issue was previously discussed at council on eleven July two thousand seventeen, and we also provided a summary of the Brevard County jurisdictions as to their position on this matter.
Okay, Ms. Busaka, any?
Well, I have a brief presentation.
Oh, good.
I promised to make it quick. If I know how to... Oh, it's always the secret, I know. They're going to come out here and make me turn this on. I want to tell you what my children do at my home. There you go, thank you. I told you they would, I know that. Okay, this just explains that what happened was a constitutional amendment, Senate Bill eight A was passed earlier this year, and that provides the legislative framework. And basically, what it says is that individuals with specific conditions or symptoms attested to by a certifying physician, and these are the specific medical conditions, but if a physician says that someone else can have it, then they can get it. Identification cards are provided by the Department of Health, they're used to purchase as well as to inform law enforcement that the individual can possess specific amounts of medical marijuana. Medical marijuana treatment centers include cultivating, processing, dispensaries, and delivery services. And there are current locations that are open, you can see in several communities. The ones that are closest to Titusville are Orlando and Palm Bay, and those are currently open. In addition to that, there are planned dispensing locations in other areas. This, since this was put together, the Fort Myers dispensing location has now opened. The legislation allows that there can be an expansion of treatment centers based on number of patients. The October twenty-sixth numbers are shown. The latest number is November eighth, there were fifty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five registered patients in the state of Florida, and the number of ordering physicians remains at one thousand sixty-six. The state regulations for dispensaries are pretty specific, they include who can purchase, they include security, lighting, hours of operation, and, just so you know, medical marijuana cannot be mailed, it can be delivered. If you are going to a dispensary, you're required to wear a visitor's pass, and employees have requirements that include background screening and minimum age. As described, there are three options. You can allow dispensaries, they must be regulated as a pharmacy, the only difference is that they may, they may be maintained outside of a five-hundred-foot separation from primary, middle, or secondary schools. Notice that that does not include daycare centers. Or dispensaries can be banned, and the third option is to amend pharmacy regulations. That is one that concerns staff because of the potential to create non-conforming with existing pharmacies. We currently regulate pharmacies with permitted uses, as a permitted use in several zoning categories, as you can read, and its limited uses in three others. And finally, the other considerations that other communities have discussed is that dispensaries are mostly cash businesses, that the statute requires the city is unable to regulate the location, number, or distance, the product is illegal at the federal level, and no one is quite certain at, as to the enforcement capability of the Department of Health. I will tell you that if my browsing history ever gets identified, that our people, our friends at IT are going to be very concerned, because I spend a great deal of time on websites that, that I frequently get blocked from. But in saying that, I have not seen in the state of Florida a report about pros and cons and experiences that other communities have had, so I don't know whether those have been positive or not. It's possible that it's because of the newness of all of this, I don't, I do not know, and I would be happy to any, answer any questions I can.
I have a question. Has the county taken a position yet?
They have. The county has decided to continue its moratorium. I think that many communities are doing that, waiting to see if perhaps the legislature will change some of these regulations in their new legislative session.
Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir. We have about five or six.
That's what you're waiting for. Will you call the cards, please?
Yeah, we actually have four. Ray Haskell?
Good evening.
Ray Haskell, two nine oh five, Larkspur, Titusville, Florida.
Sir, could we have you to hit this little button on the, on the microphone there, so you get you on record?
Okay, Ray Haskell, two nine oh five, Larkspur, Titusville, Florida.
Thank you, sir.
I strongly suggest that you guys please put in a dispensary. This is ridiculous. The science is here, we have a public mandate, we know everybody's fighting it from above. I've had to shepherd three people out. It wasn't any fun. One in particular. Please, people are hurting, suffering, and we keep fighting them, it's just terrible. Stop it. Thank you.
Next card, please, clerk, clerk?
Gail.
No, sorry, I was talking to the clerk.
It's Gail, and it's S-T-U-C-Z-Y-N-S-K-I, I'm not even going to try to pronounce it.
Gail, well, half of you know me. My name is Gail Stazinski.
You just turned the microphone off, ma'am. Hit it again?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Gail Stazinski, two one five one, Palomino Drive, and I am asking you to vote for it. I have muscular problems, which it does help, but I, my doctor will not allow me to have it, because the pain, the nerve pain is extremely excruciating, it's enhanced from the marijuana. I know people that will greatly, greatly have their life enhanced from it and be more productive. I can't, but many others can, and I hope you'll do. I can't, but many others can, and I hope you'll do it for them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Peter Stwinski.
One second, please. Member Diesel? Okay, take this one off. Sir?
Peter Stazinski, 2151 Palomino Drive. Most of you have known me, have seen me. I've talked to most of you. Some of you may know, some of you may not know. I have MS. I've probably had it for 30 years, but was misdiagnosed with, with, no, with fibromyalgia. Because back years ago, all that I could go to was Parish Clinic. Now it's Perro Health Alliance. But back then, if they couldn't figure out what it was, it was labeled fibromyalgia. And I got on the Florida Department of Education Vocational Rehab Program about five, six years ago, and at the time, they had funding, so they sent me to a neurologist. My brother has MS. His girlfriend has fibromyalgia, so I kind of know differences between the two. And I knew it wasn't fibromyalgia, so they sent me to a neurologist. They did an MRI, and come to find out, I had MS, and I probably had it for a long time. When this got voted on last year and approved, my first neurologist appointment after this got voted through was that I'm a perfect candidate for it because of my MS. And due to my MS, I have anxiety issues. And, you know, I've sent all of your emails in the past, and I didn't get replies, so the replies were a little strong, but that's the disease. I'd appreciate it if you would reply to my emails even just to say, you know, talking to the wrong person or refer me to the right place. But like she said earlier, the closest dispensary is Palm Bay or Orlando. That's an hour drive for somebody. And with somebody with a disability, that's a long way to go for medication. And right now, I'm on a medication for my MS. It's $6,000 a month. You can't get in a pharmacy. None of the MS medications you can get in a pharmacy. You have to get them from a specialty pharmacy, and they get mailed to you. That's a difficult process. You have to plan ahead. You have to, you know, know when to reorder it. And by having a facility here or in the area for people in this area that can go to, they don't have to go an hour to get it or don't have the ability. You know, some people can't walk with MS. They can't drive. At least, I still have the ability to walk and drive. You know, I have muscle fatigue and many other issues from the MS. But like I said, my neurologist said that I would be a perfect candidate for it. He's not gonna prescribe it, but he suggested that this is an alternative. Can I just have one more minute?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, wait, one second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Okay, the big buzz thing in the news lately is opioids. And we all take opioids. Everybody in my family does because of medical issues. And we know the opioid addiction problem because our next-door neighbor broke into our house several months ago and stole my wife's parka sets. So we had her arrested. Two weeks after she was arrested, she had a baby. Then nine months, she was pregnant. She was taking, probably stealing some from us, but getting wherever she could get them from. So that is a problem. But, you know, opioid, there's other more serious issues out there than opioids. And the access to medical marijuana for people with disabilities, you know, that's greatly needed in this area. It'd be a huge help for people. And I strongly suggest that you support allowing a facility in this area.
I have a question for you, sir. What form, you're taking medical marijuana now.
No, I'm not.
You're not?
No.
Oh, okay.
They said I was a perfect candidate for it, but like I said, my neurologist isn't gonna prescribe it. They suggested that, you know, I find someplace that would prescribe it.
And what are you paying, the $6,000 a month?
I'm not paying that. I'm on SSI, so my Medicaid insurance, Medicaid, yeah, Medicaid insurance is paying for that. I could never afford that. What I get for Social Security a month is $20.50. I've worked all my life, paid into the system.
What is it they are paying for, then?
They're paying for all my, I have to pay for my neurologist, but they pay for my primary care doctor. They pay for the MS medication. They pay for the Xanax for my anxiety issues, and that's another thing is the...
What I'm asking is, what is the medication you're taking?
It's called Baggio.
Okay, nothing to do with marijuana, though?
No, this is, this is a big pharmaceutical.
Thank you, sir.
There's probably about 15 different MS medications out on the market right now, and they all average about $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 a month.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next card, please.
Regina.
Can he come up with me because we're kind of, we're both doctors, and we both kind of have the same opinion. That's my husband. Because we were kind of having...
I couldn't hear you, ma'am. Would you step up to the microphone?
I was just asking if we could both come up together. That's my husband. We're both physicians, and we have a different perspective on this.
Yeah, I'll allow that. Please, come up. You're still gonna have three minutes to speak.
Again, Dr. Regina Faitner, 3868 Southwood Circle, Titusville, Florida.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Ethan Webb. I'll say my piece first and sit down and let my wife talk. I'm a board-certified internal medicine physician. I've been practicing medicine for 21 years. I truly feel the pain that different people that have come up, or may come up in a minute, describe what they're describing. But there are a variety of different medications that can ameliorate the discomforts that they're describing that, you know, it's not just opiates that we use. Those are the nerve modulators. In other words, there's a whole slew of medicines that I can write. And if I can't write them, then pain management physicians can write. And not just pain medicines. They can do other procedures to take away a lot of the discomforts that medical marijuana is supposed to be able to do. The other thing that's very, very difficult in this situation, there's a whole slew of things that medical marijuana can be used for. Post-traumatic stress disorder. Well, there's a whole other armamentarium of other psychotropic medicines that do just fine without basically making someone comfortably numb. Now, so from my aspect, I just wanted to let you know, from an internist, that pretty much everyone that's behind me that's gonna come up is seeing an internal medicine doctor. And the reason why the neurologist won't prescribe it is because it's still not the right thing to do. And I'll leave you with this one thing. Just because you can prescribe a medicine, or just because you can do a procedure, doesn't mean that you should. I'll leave you with that. My wife, Dr. Faitner, has a different perspective, similar line, but different reasoning why we say that this is not the right thing to do in this town that I live in.
Thank you, sir.
I have a disability as well. I'm a chronic pain sufferer. I am medically retired from my practice of pediatrics because of chronic back pain. My first surgery was in 2010. I have researched and gone through everything. Mind-altering drugs are not an option. I do not want somebody out on the streets driving under the influence of marijuana. My child's sitting there. There's other families roaming around. It's a slippery slope. Colorado started out medical marijuana. Colorado started out medical marijuana. Next thing you know, it was recreational marijuana. Crime has gone up. College dropout has gone up. Unemployment has gone up. Homelessness has gone up. And addiction has gone up to numerous, not just... When we talk about gateway drugs, tobacco, alcohol leads to marijuana. Prescription drugs is a big problem. I find that ironic that they want to fight, and I am a pain sufferer. I just had RFA done on myself by a spine surgeon two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Would you like more time, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Two minutes?
Yes, sir. So, you know, I'm...
One second, please. Motion, second. All those in favor say yes.
So I, myself, am going for things that I won't have to take pain medicine. I did what's called radiofrequency ablation, otherwise known as rosotomy, where they burn the nerve endings under a local sedation, and it's supposed to last for six months to a year. I have fibromyalgia. I have chronic back disease. I also have a heart problem. I also have some other medical problems. I have, I can't get Social Security disability because I was too high of an income earner, so I guess I just, you know, I'm fighting that one, too. I volunteer at the schools and that. I do what I can. I modify my lifestyle. I feel for those in pain. I'm in pain, too, daily. I take medicine daily. I do procedures. I do acupuncture. I travel to Deland every third week to get acupuncture, which helps. It helps. And it does not alter my mental status. And then, you know, there are other options. We don't want our streets, you're gonna bring in, you talked about the prostitutes waving to you. You're gonna have the drug addicts out there. I don't want her getting approached by the drug addicts. 500 feet from a school is not that far. I watch children every morning walk long distances. We live in Hunter's Ridge. I watch them walk to the schools on Dairy Road. I've seen drug deals go down, right there. We've seen drug deals going down on the corner of Garden and Carpenter, where they got rid of that donation box. You'll see the cars pull in there. We'll watch them. We've seen police officers drive by, and we're like, okay, we know what's going down. How come they're not stopping them? So it's, it's not a solution. It's not a solution, and as a pain sufferer myself and a highly educated person and someone that I feel is an expert and able to speak on this as a sufferer and as a medical person, this is not the right thing to do, and this is not what we want in our community, and this is not what you should want around your families.
Thank you, ma'am. Did I understand you're a physician also?
Yes, sir, we both are.
Okay, thank you. Next card, please. Whoops, wait a minute. We got one other question. Member Stokel? Say again.
I wanted to speak if there were no more cards.
Okay, well, are there more cards?
No, sir, no more cards.
You can speak.
Just 10 seconds.
I can't, you're saying something, but...
He wants to speak again.
Just 10 seconds.
No, sir, you're not, unless you're called up by someone, but... That's one of our rules, and we get one shot at the, bite at the apple.
Yeah, and I did want to appreciate our citizens coming forward and sharing their concerns. I do appreciate Regina and Dr. Webb. I didn't know you were gonna be here. Dr. Webb's actually my doctor, so that's funny. My concerns that I have with it, which is why I'm in favor of either banning it or extending our moratorium, is because I think, I don't think we are anticipating the state putting these restrictions on us. Prior to that, we were looking into maybe opening one or two or three, and then we had this new legislation that said ban it or allow it. And I think it was kind of a shock for a lot of the different municipalities. As you can see in the chart I'm just looking through, there are people that are allowing it, but most of our county, and I've talked to some of our other council members in different cities throughout Brevard County, and most of them have elected to ban it currently. Some of the concerns I have, I would like to wait to see what happens in this next legislative session because I do think they're going to have to address it. When you approve, when it gets voted in to approve a constitutional amendment, I think they're gonna have some legality concerns with offering a ban option when something has been voted in to the constitution like that. So I want to wait to see what they, what they say. It concerns me that if you guys look on the options, the staff actually recommends not amending our current pharmacy regulations because then that would make some of our pharmacies potentially in nonconforming status. So if we were to permit it now, I'm fearful that a couple of them could open up, and then once the legislative decides, then we could be potentially in having nonconforming dispensaries at that point. And so if we are going to do this, I want to make sure it's done right. Again, other things, just to keep in mind, it still is illegal federally. If you guys remember, we had the police chief in here. He had some concerns with it. I just don't think we're ready to that point yet to allow it, just with everything else that we're dealing with, so that's my opinion.
Thank you. Member Diesel?
I don't think that we can deny the 71% approval vote for this. There's just no question that's out there. But I also don't think that we can deny the fact that we deserve in our community to have home rule on how we feel comfortable with it in our community. I realize that there's a lot of people that would say, you know, 71%, you gotta make a move. But I don't know what the exact numbers were in Titusville, but I don't think they're probably the same as they were in Miami or places like that. But at the same time, I realize it's out there. You can't close your eyes to that. But I also, again, I don't like the way it's coming our way with very little options on how to do this and taking away our home rule. I also think that we should defer until the state gets some clarification in the next session, and the county has not made a decision on this either.
Thank you. I don't, was it 71%? Does anybody know what the actual...
I can tell you what it was in Brevard County. I looked it up today. It was 70.85%.
In Brevard County, but...
For the state, and so we were very consistent with the state.
My bad. Member Nelson?
It's very hard to turn around and ignore what the voters are telling us we need to do. But in reflecting on the statute, the way it's written, and understanding your position, understanding your position, right now, we could have a dispensary right next to a daycare. And that really bothers me. There are places where this kind of activity, we really don't need it. And the problem is, we either have to say, yes, we're having them, or no, we're not. And we're not allowed to put any restrictions on where the dispensaries can be. We can't say, we can't even say, no, you know, Joe, you can't move next to that little daycare over there. I mean, we don't have that power. And so until that gets resolved, I don't see us doing anything. I mean, right now, they can move next to a daycare. They can move next to a playground. And we're powerless to turn around and say, no, the playground's not a good place. The daycare is not a good place. So I think the state's gonna have to take some action before we do.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I'm gonna take a opposite direction on this. City attorney, the city of Orlando adopted, adopted it with a limited, I guess, a limited number of permits. And then it's noted as that was because it was prior to the Senate bill. Is that still legal to do based off?
In my opinion, based on the way the law's written, you need to treat them the same way you're treating your pharmacies.
So theoretically, it would be a limitation on pharmacies?
If you wanted to, if you wanted to go that route.
Right.
You'd change regulations on pharmacies.
Yeah, and that, so that, step one, I think there's two ways. One is, the state has handed us, the voters went out and voted, and I think that they were fairly clear. Whether I agree with it or not, I think that they were overwhelmingly clear in what they said yes to. And in Brevard County concurrently, it's 70% locally in Brevard. So if it was all Miami, or it was all someplace else, I could probably make a better argument, specific to home rule. It's a desire to our county. But, you know, you're about two to one and some change on people who said yes. And not just yes, but constitutionally made amendment to it. That's it. That's a defined right, and that's it. So to deny somebody a constitutional amendment or constitutional right has to be, you know, there's some strong grounds for denial for that. So here's what I think is gonna happen. I think that while we are patient over the next year, I think that the political landscape in Florida has the potential to substantially change. And in contrast to being possibly restrictive and, I guess, implement as written... And in contrast to being possibly restrictive and, I guess, implement as written locally, I think that probably the wheels will come off further in 2018. And by 2022, 2020, somewhere about that, I think that where Colorado's at is, we're gonna probably be closer, like it or not. I think it's probably gonna move that direction, just based off of, number one, what people went out and did. Number two, the longer you deny it, I think sometimes folks get a little bit more antsy on it. So, that's what I think's gonna happen. So, because of that, my suggestion would be to move forward with it. We've waited a year, and the rationale for that moratorium, I think, from councils, and I fully supported that idea, is that be patient, see what happens, see how it rolls out. And at this point, part of the state has rolled it out. Palm Bay was the first one. I think everybody's kind of waiting to see who would take the first step. Palm Bay moved forward in that first step. Multiple cities, Edgewater, fairly comparable city, has kind of taken that first step. Additionally, from a dispensary standpoint, because of the limitation on, that the state of Florida has put on, what you can't get is five different dispensaries on every corner. It's, numerically, would be very challenging. It's for every hundred thousand people that register, a dispensary is potentially available. And to think that Titusville would somehow, for some reason, have seven dispensaries, I don't think that that's gonna happen. So, because of that, I, I would say to move forward to allow it at this point. And the rationale, number one, it's constitutional amendment, so there's a defined right by voters. I think that we've had a year's time to review, look, and so forth and so on. I'm in agreement that it is horrible legislation and a total overreach by the state of Florida relative to home rule. They gave us a junk pile to work with, which has put us in a really bad spot. And I think that they, but I don't see it getting better. I see if anything, it's probably gonna get worse. Not based on being more restrictive. I think it's probably gonna go the opposite way. And because of that, then we're gonna be dealing with another set of issues. And it's gonna be, I think it's gonna come under the pharmacy domain as well. And that's how I think everybody's gonna get around it. So I would rather relook at how we zone, because the, the definition by the state of Florida may have not changed, but in practical application, pharmacies have now changed how they operate in the state of Florida, and what that means, at least at a city level. So, it no longer just can mean the traditional medical use that we have come to accept it and is lawful and approved. Pharmacies have now apparently are medical marijuana places relative to a city. And that's the state of Florida has dictated to us, so that's where I'm at with it.
Remember Diesel?
Having been, if you don't know, having been at Titusville High School for thirty-five years, I think a good visual that concerns me is that we just had a med fast built in front of our school. And glad to have them. No reflection, no comparison. But just imagine if that was a marijuana dispensary. And we have no control, and we have no home rule to say that that building that's right outside our gate cannot be a medical marijuana dispensary. I don't like that at all. And again, I will digress to the fact, fact that I pointed out, and I will stand by the fact that seventy-one percent of Floridians voted for this. It's gonna happen, but we need to have some control over it, and we can't be having dispensaries in front of high school parking lots. And that's a visual I can't get rid of.
I have to say that, A, I think the voters were sold a bill of goods. They were given images of crying children and talking about the children and the children and the children, which we naturally have a lot of sympathy for that situation. But it was primarily sold by one group of attorneys in, in Orlando, who put millions of dollars into it, and I don't think it was because they want to save the children. If we open this door at this point in time, we, we may live to regret that, because once you open a door like this, you almost can never shut it again. I feel the, the most prudent thing we could do at this point is, is do a moratorium again, so we can see what's happening. Most of the cities, and from what I see, and counties and so forth, are doing that same thing. Very few of them have stepped up at this point, because nobody really knows what we're gonna see. I, I don't want to open that door until I absolutely have to. We may have to. I don't know. But why do we want to do it at this point? I think it's much more prudent of us to put a moratorium on, and then let's, let's take a look at what happens in the legislature. What happens, maybe another vote comes up by petition or something in the next year. I don't know. A lot of things could happen. But I'm not ready to open that door, and I don't really think the people of Titusville are, are either. So, that's where I stand on it.
I see, remember Stokel?
This is a question for staff. Is it possible to get the, a comparison of whether or not we put a moratorium, extend that moratorium versus banning it, and what does that look like in terms of fees? Because I think there's, we have to re-advertise if we're doing a moratorium, I believe. And then, in terms of, once we, if we decide, once we get new direction from the state, is there a difference between when the mor- like, trying to figure out how to word this. I know that we can, if we put a year moratorium on it, we could stop it early if we needed to. And what does that process look like versus if we had it banned, and we decide to lift that ban? What does that look like? Just so we know that, if we're leaning that direction.
The decision to ban or to have a moratorium will require an ordinance.
Okay.
The advertising costs on that ordinance and the work for staff is the same.
The same.
The timing would be the same. There, there would be no difference there. The moratorium, as they have been written in the past, said that council could choose to end that moratorium sooner.
Okay.
Now, this is where I need the attorney to help explain the process for ending that.
Sure. You could set the mor-, you know, moratoriums are supposed to be temporary by nature, to allow you time to research a subject, determine what kind of regulations you feel are appropriate. You could extend it. I think the county extended it through, is it six months or just till the end of legislative session, March?
It's March, yeah.
Right. Anytime, if, if something did come out, this council could decide at, at a public meeting that we would like to, in the moratorium, then we'll put it on an agenda to come back to you, to, in the moratorium, and then come back with an ordinance. So, ending it is not a long-evolved process. At any meeting, this group, a majority could decide it's time to end the moratorium, and give advisability to come back with another ordinance to, to move forward, regulating them, banning them, whatever you decide to do.
Is that the same process in terms of if we were to ban it and then wanted to lift that ban?
If you ban it, as stated, that would be an ordinance. We'd have two public hearings, because that would be a list prohibiting that. And, and once that is done, if you want to change your code, then you would have another, two public hearings to, to change, because that would now be part of your code, your action. So it would require an ordinance to change that.
Okay.
Anything else? Yes. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, sir. This would be my last comment. About my, I guess where I, I'll go one further. So, you know, in absence of moving forward with it, I, I would feel more compelled for the council that we would make a decision, either a yes or no decision, for the idea of, I think the fidelity of a moratorium. So, if, if the deal is that we're waiting to see six months at a time, I can understand that, but we're a year into it. And we can use a moratorium again. But I'm just saying, if we're just doing it to kind of measure, and there will be something significant that we really think is pending right now to, to look at, I think that could give cause to a moratorium. But in absence of that, I, I would argue that then either we yes or we no, but not be in this middle ground of just let's wait and see, wait and see, wait and see. If we're just gonna wait and see for the sake of it, and the position currently of council is no, then say, then say no. But that, that's just kind of where I'm at, like, because I, I, in, in the same respect, being respectful for the vision that is being painted, of which I get, I get that. I also, and not to go to the bill of goods, or, you know, it's an emotional argument, but somebody with cancer right now who this might be an option for, ain't gonna have it this year, and didn't have it last year. And ain't gonna have, you know, or, or maybe they do, or maybe they don't. So that, the same, I guess, the same impact, is I don't want to provide some false hope to somebody who really is kind of banking on this happening. I'd rather say, no, it's not gonna be an option. So for your next year, take it out of your plans, and you gotta go somewhere else.
Remember Nelson?
I think the reason we did the original moratorium was because the state legislature was enacting a statute. And so, we were waiting for that to come, come down, because they said, we're gonna have these rules and regulations, and we're gonna outline how to do this. And that took till June, July, before they came up with their seventy pages of, yeah, do this, don't do that. So I think the first moratorium was to wait for that. Second moratorium was, we were reviewing that, looking at it, and seeing what the county was doing. This time, I think if we do a moratorium, we're basically looking at, okay, you, the legislatures, legislators have gone through, and they've come up with this ordinance or statute. And like most statutes, they need to go back and do a little tweaking. So, if they tweak, and it's something that's appropriate, then we might want to look at it. So, I would say, let's do a moratorium. Let's see what they come back with. Hopefully, they'll come back with some, make it a little more restricted.
Remember Diesel?
I understand, it's my understanding, that many of these cities that are in moratorium are doing so, and I don't use the word protest, but certainly stepping back to the state legislature and saying that we have some home rule here, and we're not gonna have one in front of a high school gate. And right now, they're, that's kind of where I'm waiting here. Because I'll be very honest with you, if they come back to us and, and still, and we've got to make a decision, if we don't have any say on where these go, and they're just gonna, you know, let me make sure my language gets correct here. If they're going to just make us go their direction, and here, you take it, seventy-one percent, you got it, we're gonna put them wherever they want to go. I, I have issues, as anybody who's talked to me during the campaign, with how many car washes we have, and how many auto parts stores we have. I'm not happy about how many of those we have. If I have no control over this, am I gonna have some more, you know, auto parts store issues? Perhaps not. But I do know that right now, I can't tell you that we can't keep it away from the places we want to keep it away from. And if they don't give us that power, I, I don't have, I don't see me saying this is a good idea.
Okay. Well, I still have the same position, and that's, we, it's the prudent thing to do, is to put the moratorium, so that we get all the facts when we're ready to go one way or, or another on the thing. We need a motion? Would anybody like to care, care to make one? Come on, somebody can.
Okay. So, I would move that we extend the moratorium for six months, with the hopes that Tallahassee will provide some direction and to us.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, just want to understand, we, we're not voting on the moratorium tonight. It's the direction to us to come back to you with an ordinance to do that.
So, the, okay, Mr. Broom, how, how do you want me, that phrase?
Provide direction is what we're looking for.
Okay. Then we would provide that direction, that we would like to have a moratorium for another six months.
A second hold?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like, signed?
No.
Passes four to one, with Vice Mayor in the negative. Next item, certified production technician.
Yes, sir. On eight March two thousand sixteen, the mayor and council approved six thousand two hundred dollars in scholarship funds for the Certified Production Technician CPT program to be used by Titusville residents and/or Titusville company employees. These funds have been used by ten students and five students becoming CPT certified. The city's economic development budget includes ten thousand dollars for scholarships in the FY seventeen eighteen budget. In order to continue the program, a new memorandum of understanding is required. The proposed MOU provides for ten awards for CPT program and two awards for patient care assistance, CNN, CNA programs at Eastern Florida State College. All awards are processed through Eastern Florida State College Office of Financial Aid.
Okay. I see, remember Stokel?
Yep. I just wanted to state it publicly that I'm gonna be abstaining from this vote as Eastern Florida State College is my employer. And I have filed the appropriate paperwork already.
Okay. I don't really think you have to do that, though, because it's, yes? You recommend that, City Attorney?
Certainly, if, if she believes it's perception or a conflict of interest for her employer to derive a benefit.
If, if it's that, but that's fine. Okay. Any, any discussion on this? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I, as when, wherever we spend tax dollars, we are requesting that if council wants to move forward with this, that there's a determination of that this expenditure would be in the public interest. And in doing that, I wanted to explain why it is that staff has identified these two programs as being worthy of consideration. Career Source Brevard provided a report called Healthcare Sector Strategy for Brevard County, and identified that the Bureau of Labor Statistics projected that twenty-five of the fifty fastest-growing occupations in Brevard County between the years of 2015 and 2023 are going to be found in the healthcare industry. At this, according to June 2016 Help Wanted Online report, the registered nurse is the most in-demand occupation in the county. And the CNA is part of getting people in, into that process of working in healthcare and perhaps becoming a registered nurse. The CNA program, you're already familiar with, with manufacturing, but I wanted to note that in Brevard County, manufacturing is ten percent of the local jobs, which is twice that in the state, relatively five percent. In addition to that, it's been identified that there is expected to be over thirty-five hundred jobs needed in the next five years in the, in the manufacturing sector, and that's a nine-point-three percent growth rate. So both of these have been identified by the Brevard County, a Career Source Brevard, as being necessary for the economic development in the county.
Okay. I'd like to state that I'm in favor of this for the reasons that were, were given. These, we desperately need nurses and technicians. So, are there any cards on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I just had, so we're, it looks like we're batting around fifty percent, somewhere about, and, but, you know, some of the stories is amazing when you read through it. Are there any suggestions about getting a, or any recommendations to get maybe a higher outcome? Because we're fifty percent. I don't know. I, I don't have scope. So, in the academic world, I don't know, at this certification level, is fifty percent a good number? Is that a bad number? Is that, I know, off the top of my head, I'm like, man, that's only fifty, but maybe it's relative.
In perspective, we had hoped to have four of these scholarships originally, with the money that was set aside. And then, the East, no, EDC of Florida Space Coast got a, a grant that allowed us to put more money into, I should say, it cost us less money to do each scholarship. So, the five is the amount that we had, is actually one more than the amount that we had hoped to get originally. But I understand the fifty percent is not as much as we had hoped. We had hoped that with the program, there's mentoring, there's people who assist them. We had hoped that with the program, there's mentoring, there's people who assist them, that we would be getting a higher amount, a percentage. I will say that the people that have made it successfully through here, though, have done very well for themselves and the community. So, I think it's just a decision as to whether you feel comfortable with that particular perspective. Because I don't know of any way that it is likely to change.
I think I, so I, I think I would just, hey, I, I would be comfortable with moving it forward 'cause, you know what, you get one person out of this group and they're able to step out into a career, then that's a, that's a huge win. It'll pay for itself down the road, so I'm comfortable with that. I, I would also, I would also welcome a chance to maybe re- reach back out to the provider and say, you know, we're batting 50 this year and, you know. 'Cause I remember having this discussion, I think, the year before the introduction of this program. And it seemed awesome and we had some good results, but reminding them of some of the expected outcomes.
Member Nelson.
I'm just gonna add, we had a program at the Social Service Center the other day. And the lady came and presented to the audience. We ended up with about 20 people. And they were very interested in this program, so. And Eastern Florida, there was a gentleman there from the school board and somebody there from Eastern Florida. And they were talking about actually doing some of that program as a social service center.
It would seem if it's successful, it will draw more people in. So, I'm totally in favor of this. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding with Eastern Florida State College Foundation and authorize the mayor to execute those documents.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item is mayor's report. You have my written report. It was a busy week, last week, with all the veterans things going on and everything. It was great to see them. The city and I, the city manager and I, and Member Diesel and I went to several of them and each one was very touching and lots, lots of wonderful people. Anyone else have any report that they'd like to give?
I do, sir.
Go right ahead.
Last night, we had the privilege of holding the Space Coast League of Cities here in Titusville. Was very thankful for that, very thankful for all the staff. They did a fantastic job and really showing the best of our city. So, thanks to everybody who did that. We also, just so you know, I presented the most recent letter that we submitted to the Brevard County Commission reflective of some of their commissioner's comments. I read the last lines of that letter and that was received with thunderous applause. So, we are not alone in our stance for protecting home rules specifically with our CRA. So, that's it.
Thank you, anyone else?
No.
Hey, I apologize. I meant to say this earlier and so I forgot. We have a number of teachers that have been nominated for Outstanding Teacher of the Year. And our Christmas parade is coming up. And I don't know if this is possible or not, but it would be really nice to be able to honor some of the teachers in our city and ask them to join us with the Christmas, in the Christmas parade. So, that would be my suggestion. I think, I think we lost Scott.
No, ma'am, we, we don't. We don't organize the parade, ma'am, we participate in it.
Okay, could we turn around and, and?
I believe Kiwanis is the organizer of the parade, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Kathy.
Well, as I know that, we lock it from our high school.
Okay, so.
Text me, remind me something, I'll help you out.
Okay.
City manager, I think we're on your report.
Yes, sir, we've got a special meeting date request for council to consider for CBDG grant funding. The primary date that we're requesting for the special meeting is 16 January at 5:30. And the secondary date is the 30, 30 January 2018. So, we're requesting as an action item, council select one of these two dates so we can get the proper advertising done.
Okay, city, any reports, sir?
Sir, we, we're gonna need an action item for you to select one of the two dates.
Oh, oh, tonight, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say to consider the two days. I don't have my phone.
I'm okay with either of them, I think, at this point. Yes.
I'll have, I don't have my phone with me.
January 16th and the 30th, they're Tuesday nights.
16th or the 30th. So, it'd be either the first, the third, or the Thursday.
What's the date on this, right?
They're both Tuesdays. They're the opposite of your council meetings.
I will say the 16th, just so you guys know, is the day after Martin Luther King Jr. Day, if that affects anyone.
For us, we have the interior president, that great experience in the theater on January 16th.
So, it sounds like the 30th is better for everybody?
30th.
Thumbs up, 30th? 30th it is. We've also included some additional information items for you. And as you know, at the end of November, at our second meeting, council will need to take a look at your additional duties as well as select the vice mayor during your regular meeting. And we've listed those for you to take a look at and consider. And I have a, a request from the Lights of Hope organization that's running the, the annual Lights of Hope in Sandpoint Park. We've been sponsoring, the city's been sponsoring this event over the last three years. As you recall, the first year we, the request was a pretty healthy chunk of money to help get the thing started. And then we subsequently have supported it financially. Last year, they had about 1,200 visitors. The organization is asking not for financial support, but for the city to sponsor the event for them. And that, what that will involve is the, we'll draft a letter for the mayor officially sponsoring this event and send it to the organization.
Are there other conditions of sponsoring or what are the expenses?
They just wanna put a city of Titusville seal associated with the event.
I took my grandkids to it, except twice, I guess. And it's a, it's a great thing and it seems to be getting better. So, I personally would have no problem with it.
Yep, same, I think it's a great idea.
And my understanding is there's no financial obligation whatsoever. It's just, they would like a letter of support from the council signed by the mayor that says, we're, we're more than willing to step up the plate and sponsor the event.
We need a motion.
I, I think I got it. And then finally, the Shoreline Restoration Workshop that was requested from citizens is scheduled for five, five December at 5:30. And Strategic FY 19 Strategic Planning Budget Process is underway in January already. So, congratulations, council, you've made it through your first year because we're beginning the next budget cycle. And from staff, we would like to wish council a, an enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday. And we're hopeful that everybody can get together with their families and have a safe and relaxing holiday. This has been a heck of a year, having two hurricanes in one budget year and other things. So, I think we have a lot to be thankful for. Both hurricanes, the damage to our city, it never broke us and we didn't lose anybody. So, we appreciate that. That's a subjective question that completes my briefing.
All right, any other words for the good of the order? I see none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.